.................................................................. Please join me in a moment of silence. Ms. Brand, would you please follow?
Mr. Hershey?
Here.
Mrs. somebody? Here. Mr. Tozzo?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Grace?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Now, Henry. President. Okay, we have a farm to conduct business.
Mr. Hershey, would you like to announce anything?
Yeah, I was just gonna do that, just to remind folks that we are being filmed by video and this will be uploaded on YouTube. There's scheduled visitors, agenda adoption.
Make a motion we adopt the agenda for a second.
We have a motion instructed to adopt the agenda. Any additions?
Yes, I have two items. I just want to add the sidewalks to something that's already on the agenda, but it's the community revitalization program. And I think some of what I'm saying about the sidewalks in the park has, you know, sort of fits in there too. So, just add that.
Is that like A1 or?
No, just under A, but I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up. And then, the other one is, I want to add rental properties to G under new items of business.
Any other?
The discussion through items, I mean, communication about social media, which we have a copy of. And also, the use of social media, which I believe you have a copy of.
Do you have a fact on that, or if it's written in there?
Well, I don't know if I need to add it to the agenda.
I'm sorry, you said.
The federal fairhouse is second things from, so we look at the sidewalk ones.
I need to make a couple additions as well. All right. Some of those ones on here. I need to add a PO for AG Industrial, I believe.
I don't know, it's not a path for you to go.
My policy.
Need to add PO 20584 to five-
New items?
Yes, new items. PO 20584 to Five Star International, an amount of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars for a 2017 International 7300 four-by-four truck through Coast Stars. And I also need to add PO 20585 to EnterCon Truck Equipment, an amount of sixty thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for a truck build through Coast Stars as well.
Did we get it back though?
Sorry, I'm back.
That's on there, I have it already on there.
Oh, okay.
Did you get it yet?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Any other additions?
I guess I have two-
Yeah, I don't have that.
Two items for new items of business. I thought they were gonna be in here, but you know, I dropped the ball, just never got it. Truck parking and the Federal Fair Housing Act.
If no other additions, we have no motions to adopt the agenda. We have seven additions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Motion carries. That brings to public comment. Any public comment? Yes, Mr. Doherty?
Is there any news about the no-fault act? I know you're not gonna tell me, I just like to bring that up. If I was one driving, one of the cars involved there, there would not be all this secrecy, which is true. The same law should apply to everybody. It should not matter who you are. When I was involved in auto acts, I achieved a letter within two days. It's been at least a month since the birds altered act. Are you hoping it'll be forgotten, so it can be swept onto the road? I guess you just put it in the FNF file, file and forget it. You know, it's two, see, you got two different laws here. It depends on who you are, and what you are, and who you know, and all that goes into it. I went off through that one time. I lived around on the light, I know what went on. You know, if I had a problem, I knew who to go to, you know. And I know this here, it's, I know there's lawyers involved in that, and all this carries on you now, and you can't say this and that, but I know in my accident, when the mailman came the next day, I had my letter there, my file there, and everything, see. He talked about no no-fault. I don't know how you can have an accident in nobody's fault. I could never understand that, you know. But laws are funny, if they're special people, you know. You know, if you know the right people in this world, that's all you gotta do. Laws don't mean anything, you can get around laws and everything, and it's just a shame, life like happens, you know. I was messed up a couple times, you know, I didn't treat nobody, but, you know, I needed a little input, you know, I want to see certain fellow. None of these people around here know who, and I had to take care of it a minute, you know what I mean? Hey, hey, it was pretty serious, pretty serious, you know. I think everybody on the tree deep, it's nothing about who you are, and what you are, and what you are, you know, that's what I don't understand, you know. It's a shame, and all this is here, just for you quieted out a little bit more, you know, so. The word gets out, just like I said the last one, about that, remember up in the paper, you know? People find out, think, a small town like here, every time somebody drops a nickel, somebody knows about it. So, secrecy will get you nowhere, that's all I'm gonna say is, thank you, Tom.
Okay, any other public comment? Yes.
I just have a question on one. On the rental property, is that regarding inspections of them?
It's regarding a lot of issues, yeah, just.
But, if you don't mind, I'd like to save my time for that period. That's, well, that's what it's about, so I just forgot.
Well, it's, you might want to speak on that, because this is something that just came up over the weekend. It's not really about inspections, just that, it's just about some issues we're having with properties.
We have four minutes, if you want to know.
Well, I'll go ahead and use it.
Yeah, if you want to jump in later, you can do.
Now, here recently, in the past week, we've had a lot of rental inspections done in business district. And one of the big items was the carbon dioxide detection systems. The problem with, I had with that, is everybody that was inspected that didn't have one failed. The reason was, because it's a new item on the list. It was never ever on the list before, but now, it's on the list, and they were never notified this was gonna happen. Now, they end up with another sixty-five dollars, just to hook up a detection system. I feel that they should have been notified in advance that this was a new item, and should not have gone on to this, or, you know, give them a checklist if you want, of what is gonna be inspected. You know, so they can go through their system, make sure they have everything in there, so that they don't get hit with this unknown that's never been done before. And now, they got sixty-five dollars extra that comes back on it. Not only that, but then also, that makes for more time than is needed to do these inspections. And we already talked about this a couple months ago, or maybe last month or a month before, that, you know, they needed more time to do that. Well, if they don't need more time, if they would notify the people in advance that that's a new item on the list, and they could be prepared for it. And that's basically what I wanted to talk about.
Sixty-five hours plus the rent.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, yeah, I just said that.
Is there gonna be a reinspection fee or no on that?
No, actually, Randy, with all due respect, we did send out all of that information to every rental property owner. We sent it out, and we've even called people and told them it's a new thing on the list, that it's carbon dioxide. And we make that available to them, that information, when we set up the appointments and everything. That is not something that was just discovered when we came out. We have, we have a whole, you're more than welcome to stop in and see Mary, and see what we send out to the people, because there's quite a list of, and quite a packet that she sends out, because we have to pay a lot for that. But she does tell them that.
Well, I remember when my building was inspected, my shop was inspected.
Was that this year?
No.
Okay.
No, it's for occupancy, it's for. The, it was never, I asked if I could have a list of items that was gonna be inspected, because I was doing work for my landlords. And I said, I would like to be able to go down the list and just make sure there was nothing. Well, at the time, there was no reinspection fee on that, but Scott actually had to come back twice, because something came up every time that was different, you know. And I said, it'd been a lot easier if we had, if they want, they could leave them the list, and when they come around, they just use that list to go through checkmarks.
And honestly, I don't know if you had called Mary and asked her for that, or if Mary was even there at that time.
Yeah, Mary was there.
I'm not sure, but we send that out, but I don't know if we know that if you're in charge of that particular, I can't speak to that, I guess is the best way to put it, because I don't know what was done in your case a while ago, but the original question that you asked was the fact that this, the carbon monoxide, and I know that for my own, my own personal property that I rent, they had called and talked to air and everybody else that, you know, that the carbon monoxide was new, because they asked me if I had carbon monoxide, saying that I actually bought one from my rental property.
I'm not mistaken, it only applies to anybody using natural gas.
No, it applies to every, as far as I know, it applies to everybody. Yeah, but again, you're more than welcome to come by and see Mary.
Okay, any other public comment? Yep.
Who are you saying this to?
You.
Melissa or?
I mean, I have, I just have the sidewalks out that I've been going over, so I booked that, so I just have, we're doing the chamber sidewalks out on May 7th, during eight to two timeframe.
What is it?
May 7th, eight to two. I put some flyers out here, and then, you know, I can drop some off anywhere that's needed, I drop them off everywhere.
Did you put some out there already?
I did.
That's gonna be Borough Y.
Now, it'll just be right in the, like, say, the big district, on either side of the road, so I needed to make sure that I didn't need the district shut down or anything during that timeframe as well. And if, I have a reading of the 21st, so I don't know what you guys want to do for that, but last year, we got about forty, and this year, I expect sixty and maybe to a hundred sidewalk people. So, there would be on either side, you know, I'm looking at that amount of people. And I've already had high, you know, come back to work, people are calling in for it, so, and came in already paid, so I think that we'll have a bunch of people for that day for that sidewalk sale. So, I don't know if you guys are gonna, you know, be aware of it, and then plus, you know, figure out what you want to do about putting some bags in parking meters or whatever. I did talk to Scott.
You probably need to touch each particular.
Yeah, you have to, you know, talk with the chief to request the sidewalk, where the street's being closed.
Well, yeah, we have, I just thought, I just wanted to make sure that it's up to date.
And I guess what we're gonna ask in the future, if we could have a list in the first of the year of possible street closures, because from what I understand, other than First Friday, there's been extra requests for street closures, and I know that causes some problems for business owners like everyone else.
I didn't expect a high amount of people, but now that there is, I don't know what you guys want to do, because if there's gonna be that many people on the streets on the sidewalk.
I'm sorry, I can't hear, I'm just getting under a cold, but did you say you're gonna close the street?
No, I'm saying that I didn't expect so many people, so now that there is that many people that I'm expecting, I don't know what you guys want to do, because there's that many people on the street, do you guys want to shut it down? And yeah, I mean, I would have to go over a buck.
That's a conversation we'll have to have with the chief and Scott Brown.
I mean, is it helpful if you just leave the street open, but have no cars parked?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I just want to maybe bag the meters, maybe, at this point, and then see where it goes from there. Like I said, last year, we had about forty spots set up, and then, this year, I'm going, maybe sixty to a hundred, maybe.
So, you're gonna take that to the chief?
I'll talk to the chief, but we're gonna bag meters, and I'm not sure if that's something council wants to.
Where are people parking?
Isn't that a state road?
It is a state road.
Right, so I mean, I don't know what you guys want to do.
But council, council's responsible for the meters and the collections.
Okay, so I mean, at that point, like, maybe during that timeframe, the eight to two on that Saturday.
Yeah, have the conversation with the chief.
All right, so I have these, do you guys want them, yes, I have flyers.
Yeah, if you have some, I will take them and put them on our Facebook and website, and then you. We close the park for.
Yeah.
For Paul Brown.
No, we put the street on.
If he doesn't get back before, is it a part of the street? They park there, they give it out.
I mean, I think, I think it would be helpful, I mean, one of the suggestions would be just to have no parking there, so people have room to get around somewhere.
I think bags, bagged meters, if that's something, if that's right, council's okay with that, then I'll probably take that to the chief.
Do you want it to be an option, would closing Broad Street be an option, putting people in Sebastian's old lot?
Vendors.
I think there's gonna be too many.
Well, aren't the vendors the store owners, or the people coming?
No, it's for anybody.
It's open to anyone.
Oh, so then they have to do the transient retail, they have to do the, do they have to do the transient retail application?
I don't know how that works.
Yes, as far as I know, that's.
Well, but there's some caveats about borough sponsorship.
Yeah, they're doing, it's a good day event, I don't know.
Last year, I don't think we had it.
We didn't do it last year. No, you didn't do it last year, I know you didn't.
Because it didn't exist last year.
I didn't think it was set up.
No.
I think it was brought up, and it was decided.
Yeah, I think if you touch base with the chief and with Brown.
And how do you, how do you work, let's say, I have a retail store, do you put somebody in front of them, or they have their own space if they want to set up?
They have the first choice.
They have the first.
Retail store has first choice, they have front of their own place, or their employees, or whoever.
Or people go inside, too.
What's up in the parking lot, do I have to take?
Yeah, that's the point, for that day, everybody would place it, yeah, it's a sponsorship event.
I think if it's a business owner, and they set up, they have a sidewalk, they would need a permit to do that.
Right, that's their own.
Yeah, I think for the day, I think they set it with.
We look like folks.
Yeah, last year, we brought it out.
And we can't look like.
Anyone that come out would be an employee of the business.
During that day, you're gonna talk to an agent.
And they're probably.
I wonder what the attorney has to do.
Are there outside vendors coming?
Yeah, it could be anybody, like, say that you wanted to set up, you're yourself.
No, you're talking about excitement.
Yeah, it would be anybody from Oxford, yeah.
I think that person probably would have to get a transient.
Well, I thought it was Oxford people, it was a local, anybody could set it up.
I thought transient was outside.
I guess I have a question.
No, I, so I have, I'm sorry, so, back me up, I mean, I'm the freaking chair of code, so you think I have an answer and a clear-cut understanding of the whole thing, but I continue to be confused with every request that comes through, and I think we need to get clar, we need to look at the ordinances again, and we need to get clarification, so that we're giving people clear and concise information about what the expectation is. There's two issues, there's transient business, whatever we call it, and then there's a special permit. There's two different things, there are two different things, and one is where you have to list all of the, and I thought that our, in our discussion, I thought that, that everybody, regardless of what event it was, that all of those things, all of those vendors would have to be listed, and that somebody was going to have to submit that permit. And then, there's the special permit on top of that, that people have agreed to pay for, for the nonprofits, such as the Methodist Church with Rand, which Randy took care of, and you mentioned the Apple Festival. So, are we now saying that, that Chamber does not have to complete the transient retail?
Or one as a whole, as a whole.
Was the ordinance changed and combined?
There's two ordinance.
I thought, I thought there was a ordinance.
There's a, I think there's a part, there's a, we'll find it, we will resolve it.
Well, is it similar to the Borough Wide Yorks, yeah?
What's that?
The Borough Wide Yorks.
That's a borough, that's a borough function, so it's not, that's a.
If they, if they were to work with OMI, and get the one permit, which would cover everybody that's in it?
All of our vendors have to get a transient business license, everyone else.
Right, that's.
They, are they charged for that?
Well, no, I'm sorry, no.
That's not true, there's one time.
He waives a fee, but they have to file.
That they still have to file.
They have to file the paperwork.
Because it's.
Because they're all.
That's not a big deal, we'll have names and addresses.
Yeah, you don't need to let me know then, because I'm already getting names and information.
We can give that to the chief.
So, I need to.
And that's what you need to do.
Yeah, there's a.
Get the names and addresses and the fee.
Yeah.
But I agree with Susan, there needs for some policy, so that.
Well, I know, anyone that comes to me for a special event permit, I give that to them, but I will tell you, sometimes the chief calls me a bat, and says they don't need one, so that's, so, but that is why it goes up to him, that's his decision to make, so. But anyone that comes in here, gets one, I hand it to them, and they, and I had one today, so, yeah.
But this is a Chamber-sponsored event, right?
This is.
Sponsored by Chamber Commerce, which is a government entity, or an arse of a clause. I mean, is it, is it private?
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit, right?
Yeah, it's a nonprofit.
So.
But it's not a government.
Oh, and that, I remember that ordinance that stated about nonprofits, you still have to fill the permit out, so maybe the Chamber can fill out.
Maybe that's not a problem.
And then, take care of it.
Names and addresses could be handled.
Yeah, but that gets around.
Yeah, I just need to know how to do it.
I do, I do events, and I'm sorry, I mean, when you go do an event, you get a permit, and not only do you get a permit, if you want a spot, you have to pay that landlord, you, if you're setting up in front of Outback, you have to pay them to set up there. I mean, that's how big, that's how events work, but, I mean, I know that.
But the issue is what we passed and what we didn't pass.
Right.
So, we need to clarify what we passed, and we need to hold true to that, for everybody, so.
But how do we define that, and that's?
It's defined.
I carry it out, when they come in here, I hand it out, but I do not do the transient retail.
But is it the chief that makes that decision?
Well, the chief can waive a fee, but I still think that there's a permit.
And they need a permit.
Which council needs to approve the special permit.
Yeah.
As far as the fee waiver, I think, based on the group, the chief can waive.
And I give the permit out to everyone, as I just said, and then they take it up to the chief, so.
And I've never gone to a police department to buy a permit, it's always been municipality, or county, or somebody.
It's just the way we always end up here, you know, I don't know.
Mary, did this go to the gun? We had to move it on.
I guess, I guess my concern is that, so frequently, we have discussions about needing additional parking in our business community. And now, we're going to bag all the parking meters, which means that we've removed all those parking spaces. I just want us to be attentive to that issue, because.
Yeah, I have a layout of the ones, where we have, I've set out where we would have the event for, so I actually have a layout that we have.
So, how many meters would be closed off? Do you know the number of them?
Yeah, I mean, it basically goes, I don't know the number, but it goes through, I'd say, the insurance place, down through.
Co-insurance, you mean?
Well, no, I meant Maggie, Maggie Y.
Maggie's to co.
Maggie Y, Maggie Y down to.
To where?
To co-insurance.
Yeah, development insurance, yeah, the other end, yeah, yeah.
Doors and charts.
Okay.
Yeah, and then.
And that's a lot of parking spaces that we just took out.
Yeah, but I mean, the hell we.
I just want us to be attentive to that, because the one thing we hear.
We do that every First Friday, too.
Well, yeah, but on Halloween, people aren't coming in to buy, they're coming for.
We do it every First Friday.
We do it First Friday, but.
But people are coming in.
We're talking about a Saturday, in the middle of the afternoon, it's a different flow of traffic through town, in the afternoon, than it is on a Friday night, than it is on Halloween.
Well, I think this is eight to two.
Eight to one to.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you're talking about the morning through the afternoon, but you also, personally, I think we shut down Broad Street, you shut down Locust from Third Street to Second Street, and you put the people in those areas.
And then the property owners.
And the vendors can, the property owners can set up on the sidewalk in front of their business.
I don't know, but I mean, I don't see a problem, you're, you're not gonna have the employees out back, employees aren't gonna be working their store, but.
Yeah.
Bank employees.
They don't park in the parking space.
There's probably about twenty meters going down the one side, if we're talking about that many, but just bagging that, just to keep the people on the sidewalk safe. The people, the store owners are okay with it, I've talked to everybody, because I've been up in the streets, they all want to have it, they're okay having it, and paying for a spot outside of their own store, which I would be doing as well, paying for my spot, but the problem would be the, you know, making sure that it's done the right way.
I understand that you want the, you know, the safety aspect, but for me, people push the boundary wherever you put it. So, when someone sees that there's nobody parking in those spots, then they feel like, okay, well, I can walk through here now, and now I have people walking in the street right next to traffic, and that, to me, is what scares me the most. We haven't stopped the problem, which is traffic going by pedestrians. So, that's why I want to see if there's a way we can get the foot traffic off of the street that's gonna have traffic won't by.
Well, you can't, because you're gonna have foot traffic, because all the store owners are gonna have tables.
But you would minimize that amount of tables by moving things onto closed side streets for the others. So, you said you're gonna have forty-plus people?
Probably have close to a hundred.
Yeah, actually, we had forty, close to forty, and then.
How many of those, how many of those, how many of those are not store owners?
No, I mean, it's hard to say without having the exact numbers, but I would say maybe half.
It'd be mostly store owners.
So, you're taking fifty percent of the amount of things you're gonna be putting on the sidewalk possibly, and moving it somewhere else.
Between my store, like, I have twenty vendors in my store, in my store, I would probably say five to ten of them would want a spot, so now, I got those guys right there, plus everybody along the way, that has a store, wants to put their stuff out during that timeframe. So, a lot of them would be store owners, I just don't know the percentage, without, you know, looking at my numbers, and having, you know, the exact number.
So, your people inside your store now are gonna just be coming out of the sidewalk?
Yeah, they're just coming out, so there's a few that are already in there, and then plus, like, say, OMI, if they run a table, they would put stuff out there.
You don't need to bag the meters. Don't bag the meters.
Let cars park there, keep a ban.
Let cars park.
I, I mean, I think it's nice to keep the street open, because people can drive.
Well, we don't want the street closed, because the whole idea is for people to drive through, and they can see that there's.
Activity.
Activity going on, and just don't bag the meters.
That's why.
And button force the two-hours on it, or whatever, you know, just having force them out, so they can turn over.
That's why I wanted to minimize the amount of foot traffic, you know, through Third Street, by putting things on the side streets. Not removing everything off of Third Street, but moving things when we could onto those side streets to lessen that.
Can you shut down the post office? Is it purpose the post office? You want to shut down the post office?
On the side.
In the morning?
That's right.
We're not shutting down the post office.
Keep moving.
You can walk, but you're talking about walking a half a mile.
It's the same, obviously, it's supposed to be a walk, and I would just like the people on the sidewalk to be able to walk by, maybe tag some of the meter coming down, like, from the insurance company to the insurance companies, is what I was thinking.
The advantage to using Third Street is, it's got a much wider sidewalk than Locust Street, a much wider sidewalk than Broad Street, and you still have, you have enough room that people can still pass.
That's the best room.
If you put, if you, if you put tables.
I'm talking about closing those streets, I'm not talking about putting them on the sidewalks.
Excuse me, if you put tables on Locust Street, on the sidewalks, you better have it shut down, because everybody's gonna be in the street.
That's exactly what I said to do, Randy. Why don't we, why don't, let that be with the Chamber, and whoever's in charge, and sort of come up with a plan at work, depending on how many vendors.
And I have kind of a case to go down.
I agree with Randy, too, that when OMI, we started doing bagging the meters, not closing the road, I mean, notice it's unsafe, because people are walking in the parking spots, getting too close to traffic, and that's why we closed First Friday, every Friday now, First Friday, so, I agree that.
So, they are ten by ten spots, and there is another, a spot where you can walk through, which there's a safe spot, we've actually measured through, gone through the measuring wheel, and actually measured it, me and Jerome had last year. So, each spot that we have selected as the hundred spots, which we, you know, I don't think we can still, but they go on either side of the road, and there is a spot that you put your table, and then a spot that you can walk by. So, that vendor is not allowed in that second spot, they're only allowed in that first spot, which would be that, you know, ten by ten area, and then the other side of the sidewalk is open for pedestrians across, not in the street, there's a safety distance.
See, with First Fridays, you had food trucks, you had, like, the kettle corn, that went out to the end of the sidewalk, so people had to walk in the street and get around it.
Yeah, his was the only one, yep.
It's not the case.
Yeah, he was the only one that did that, and he won't, he said he won't be selling that that day.
And that's part of what, you know, whoever's running the event has to enforce, you know, you stay in by the ten by ten groups.
Well, I am, that's what I'm trying to make sure, that's what I'm doing, enforcing what I need to be enforcing.
We didn't have any problem enforcing that, that was.
Because kettle corn was the only one, and they said that they wouldn't do that, because they stuck out with their tent and stuff. Everyone else wasn't able to stick with their area.
Any other public comment?
I have the ordinance in front of me, so if you want to take time to look at the ordinance. I have, I have the ordinance in front of me, so if you wanna take time to, to look at the ordinance, um, we can do that. We collapsed the transient, I'm gonna say it wrong. We did an ordinance to amend the transient retail business, and we added part, we added the special events to it. So essentially, this would fall under the transient business ordinance, where they would need to file a permit. And all of the vendors would have to be listed, but they would, they would be filing for one permit. So one with all of your vendors listed. There are, and this is where I guess it gets tricky, so the mayor and the chief can waive the fee. Application for permit shall be accompanied by the required fee, the application fee shall be established, which we did. The fee amount may be waived in accordance with thirteen two oh four F and thirteen two oh four G. Where the special event will include one or more transient retail businesses, the sponsor shall be responsible for the retail business fees as stipulated in part one of the chapter. So the people who are exempt in those little things. Applications filed by or on behalf of any organization registered with the Pennsylvania Secretary of State as of five oh one C three Corporation for Religious, Charitable, Educational, or Other Purposes is allowed under the IRS Code will not be required to pay an application fee. Special events conducted by Oxford Main Street Incorporated will require, shall require a permit that shall not require an application fee. Where the event will include one or more transient resale, retail businesses, OMI shall be responsible for the permit fees for such businesses as provided in part one of the chapter. So it doesn't talk about chamber.
Does that include the chamber?
I don't know what, is
Well, maybe five oh one C three, yeah.
Where they have five oh, so that means
But the vendors coming in to make money aren't
That means the, the way that I read that is the Apple Festival doesn't have to pay, the chamber doesn't have to pay.
But they wanna list them.
But what about the vendors who are
But, but they, they need to be listed on the permit.
They need to list them.
They have, they have, they don't, but they don't have to accompany a fee.
So I just see the correct information.
Right, you come in, you come in here and see me, and you can get the application, but you will not have to pay for it, that's what I've heard you say.
And they're basically, everyone that has So what I'd like to do is forward this to everybody, to take another look, another read, and make sure that we interpret it correctly, because we have a lot of things coming up, and this is gonna affect. And I wanna make sure that Betsy's saying the same thing that Chief is saying, that the mayor is saying, that we're saying, so there's no, there shouldn't be It was clear as mud when we passed it, but apparently it was long enough time that it didn't occur, so
Did you file the permit through, through the chamber?
One of my, one of my concerns, and
That's true.
Yes.
What I, I've said it before, on the application, does it require, if you sell an act, a taxable item? Is it required that you have a Pennsylvania sales license?
It does not require, because I do that, my store does not require, you just have to
Because they're going for you, but let's say I come in from out of town, I sell a booth, I get a taxable item.
You're responsible for yourself.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're a private contractor.
Right, but more and more
Name a person sponsoring the event, the address, the event, describe the purpose of the event, the dates of the event, when it starts, when it ends. All the organizat, the organization's contact persons and telephone number, address, email address. Doesn't look like it's anything
And that's all on the registration form.
Doesn't look like it's anything ridiculous, it looks like it's pretty straightforward.
Just the address, phone number, and email, you said, is that all? Yeah. That's all in there, so I have that on my form, but it's
Is there one thing that would change if you had a food vendor?
No food, it's not food.
Yeah, that would be
I already know the food stuff.
That's a category.
No food.
At that, at that, at that, at that one.
Yeah, we have to do the health order.
But I mean, more and more, when I do a show, I'm required, the show that, that promotes, the promoter that does the show, they're required by the state to have a copy of my sales tax number.
We don't have that at ours.
Yeah, that's wrong.
We don't have that at ours, if that's something you wanna change, then you need to do that.
I think that we need to check with the state and see if we're required to have.
We don't have it in there, and Stacy
You're not a nonprofit. But the people coming in to sell aren't nonprofits.
Food vendors are nonprofits.
Right, so they're required to pay sales tax.
Sure, many of them.
And, like I said, at most events now, it used to be, there were, I guess, I'm a legitimate vendor, and I get sort of perturbed when I see somebody coming in next to me that, that isn't legitimate, that doesn't file the rules, that doesn't pay their sales tax, that comes, you know, so um, most shows now are required by the state, I'm, I'm telling you, to show that, like, if you promote an event um, you have to, there's a form, and I can't forget what that form is called in Pennsylvania, now I just filled one out, but
P A one hundred, it's the one hundred form, so, for the sales tax, it's P A one hundred.
We just said, I just said it's not in our ordinance, that, that is not a part of it, unless Sue's
It don't, it probably doesn't need to be in the ordinance, it probably needs to be part of the application process.
You'd have to take that with Stacy, yeah, because that is not what you approved, and that's
Definitely for all street vendors?
That's a lengthy form.
Include first Friday, would that also include first Friday?
Oh, yeah, everything.
Yeah.
Probably. We used to be able to go to a flea market, like
Pennsylvania requires that you, um, you have, you're required to be responsible for yourself, if you're selling stuff as a self-vendor, you have to report that yourself, and that puts the employee and the employer separate from all their stuff, 'cause I've dealt with it with different things online. And, and that's what I know about it, um, as far as
That's what you deal with there.
That's what I deal with there, yeah, my sister, I mean, she's a CPA, and she's, you know, real into that stuff, but I mean, without they have to have a sales tax number, I have to tell them they need to sell a tax number, if they don't get it, that's on them, they're responsible to do it, and then when they get caught not doing it, it's on their end. But on my end, I told them they had to have it.
Right.
And they are responsible for it, not me.
Yeah.
And that's, that's how I would explain, I don't know how that holds true for an event like this, I know on my end that it holds true, that as long as I tell them that they need it, I tell them what form they have to have, and, and, you know, require whatever, then
And that's all we need on the permit?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a
All right, Donnie, you wanted to say something?
Well, go ahead. I'm gonna stand here. So, I've been here for a year, and I just wanted to kind of, um, say a few things about that.
Seems longer, Donna.
It seems a lot longer. No, it does, I'm kidding. Um, so I wrote this all out because, uh, in spite of being in this position for a year, my public speaking still is weak, um, so, I'm just gonna read it. Uh, it's been a year since I became OMI's director, my first task was to find Otis the cat. Um, I'm serious, within, I think, two days of starting the job, I was receiving frantic phone calls from Sue Cole and from Larry Drennan, asking me to post things on a Facebook page that I didn't have passwords to, and put things on a website that I didn't know we had. Happily, after much searching, Otis came home on his own, um, and we were all very happy, but it was a great introduction to the town, and it let me know what, what it's like to live here. And this is why we like living and working in Oxford. Just wanted to say that I'm really grateful for all the res, all of the support that I've received from all of the local organizations, from OMI, from the board, from John Lawrence, from the Borough, the Police Department, the Public Works Department. Oxford's economic vitality is a team effort, all of us are working together, and I felt very, very supportive, I just kinda wanted to make sure you knew that. Um, Market Street, Street Project was completed last summer by the Borough, and it created an energy, and then the Sawmill Grill came in, and there's just been, I mean, all winter long, First Friday was busy, we had people we had people come into town on the coldest days of the year, because there's just this energy come, has come into the town. In the past year, we've had Sawmill Grill, Bog Turtle Brewing, Holy Grounds and Third Street Outlet, Inspection Services Group, Howitz, China House, Lime Life Planters, Susan Melrath Studio, and Studio Twenty-three have all come into town in the past year. And in the, within the next six months, we'll have Candy Case, Hollow Earth Brewing, Studio Blush, Lola's, Estellas on Locust, The Ginger Root, and last but not least, the Oak, soon, soon. So we have a lot of energy and action going on downtown, and I really wanted to kinda let you guys know, things are going well, I mean, this town is rocking, we're doing it. The Borough completed a revitalization plan update, which we are using for our strategic planning. Parking feasibility study was completed, which has made way for research into funding options for the long-awaited parking structure. That will provide parking for downtown merchants, employees, residents, visitors, so that everyone can come into town and stay and hang out all day and spend lots and lots of money here. Um, OMI has worked to set up a community calendar and social media, so that we can get the word out about everything happening in town, and that's everything, we do school events, any nonprofit, we, we publicize the heck out of it, so if you've got things to publicize, let me know. In addition to First Friday and Oxford Village Market, which was here when we got here, and we love and we keep it going, we are now doing Surprise Saturdays, which is the second Saturday, we had the Easter Bunny last week. Public art, welcome bags, which are given to all the residents, all, any new resident, like, wear, um, given them to realtors and whatnot, they're gonna be receiving a welcome bag with menus and coupons and all kinds of great things, so that they come downtown. The OMI staff and board are committed to continuing Oxford's rich tradition of being a true small town, with plenty of fun for everyone. Um, and this summer, we are including plantings in the hanging baskets, and I'm really excited about that, because, um, I used to work for a veterinarian, and he made the most beautiful stitches when he would operate on a pup. And, and I'd be like, wow, those are gorgeous stitches, and he said, it's very important that the stitches look good, so that they know that everything else is good. So when people come into town and they see those beautiful planters, and they see the streets clean, and, and they just see the Market Street Project, they know that there's good stuff happening here. So, that's it, I just wanted to say that, and thank you very much for being here for me, and please come visit me, and I brought in a couple of cards about the things that are coming up, so can I just put them up?
Sure.
Okay, that's it.
Congratulations on your
Okay, any other public comment?
I mean, just on that, on, in Oxford, when you walk in, I made that into like an information center. So I've been putting stuff out there, if anybody wants to put anything out there, it's fine, they can just come on in and put it out there. I've actually, like, left open spots and stuff, it doesn't matter what it is, so just come in, you don't have to ask. This way, when people walk into my store, I get a lot of people that come in, they just see what's going on around, all the new stuff, they can see it, and then come on in, instead of it being like, you know, so anybody can stop there and put it, so.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Please carry forward, please, uh, policy amendments.
Keep them on either.
All right. Tablets resolution, we have that in front of us, I told Casey, she said it's ready to go, the way it was. We are aware that there is insurance for the iPads when they leave the
Yeah, well, yeah.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twelve nineteen dash twenty sixteen, second.
The motion is second, approve the tablets resolution, uh, policy regarding use of the Oxford Borough technology. Uh, any other, um, comments or discussion on this?
I guess I just have a question, now, when we go to the tablets, does that mean that everything is going to be sent to us, and that we're not gonna run in here twenty minutes before the meeting and pick up a pack and start to read it?
That's my understanding.
That's the idea.
I believe that's
Okay, everybody will have written
You'll be able to scroll through all these pages, and
Yeah, okay.
They should be able to be scanned in at the last minute and be part of the cloud of however they're gonna get to us.
Technology What was that little bit about scan in at the last minute? Just tried to drop that in there, I heard you.
Can I agree with you on that?
I think we need to have a cutoff time.
We do.
Well, no, I, yeah, but I mean
There'll, there'll be no additions to the agenda, will there?
Yeah, I think there has to be.
I'm asking.
And there has to be an app that lets us write them in there on the agenda somehow, or we still have, are we still have a paper agenda?
Well, we don't have to write it in on our agenda, it just has to make sure it gets on the
Yeah, I, I take care of that.
And that's our own separate notes that we would keep in regards to whether or not we needed to know.
Okay, so the official agenda Try to sneak something in.
I mean, the way it all works, we have to buy them first, the way it all works is gonna be, um
It's all gonna be good.
A work in progress, correct?
And the second paragraph from the bottom of that first page of the resolution says, any user of such equipment must sign a technology equipment checklist, do we have one of those?
I'm sorry, where are you reading?
Second paragraph from the bottom on the first page, any user of such equipment must sign a technology equipment checklist.
We will have one, now that you have the technology equipment, yeah, we haven't done that before, so
We haven't had that before, right?
Yes.
Hey, any other discussion? Don, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item C, as far as the iPads themselves, we still haven't broken down, we're gonna wait till we get that
No, because we couldn't do that, because I think that's, I don't know if I explained it here, but
We needed an account first.
Yeah, so we needed the charge card, and then I
And we figured that out one day.
Yes, we got that straightened out, I called and called and called, and finally got someone to agree to me, I think I just wore them down.
So you'll have the item, I
So we've set up an account, yes, and then now we can ask them for that, and we will do that.
Like that, that
Yes, like you, like you said, yes, but we couldn't do that without having an account.
Shall we buy them ourselves, or are we still going through, um, being the
We are going through, no, we are going through us, yeah, he would've had to go through us anyhow, the co-stars, but, yeah, so
Can I make a suggestion for you? I have freestyle singpens for everyone, or you want it for your stuff, for your
Oh, thank you, we will, thank you.
God wanted to still use it.
Wow.
All right, new items of business, uh, community revital
Did we vote on it?
Yes.
Yeah, because we're down at C, we're going down to new items of business.
That's why I was confused.
Uh, item A, uh, community revitalization program
I just wanted to, to make it clear, because you approved, you know, the, um, the other group from Mr. Prue, and then going forward, what's the CRP, Community Revitalization? So I cannot apply for that, because they're going for it, so I just wanted you to be aware of that, I mean, I, I, I think you all are, but if you weren't, I just wanted to make that clear.
That there'll be no face
Pardon?
There'll be no face for group tapes, this
Well, not this year, no, yes. And then I'm also, I had added, any here, the park sidewalks, and I discussed this with, um, I'm sorry, do you have a motion?
I'm not sure I realize that. By going for that regarding the parking, that means we aren't going through for the revitalization.
Oh, well, yeah, that's, um, I mean, we, we could send it in, throw that trouble and that expense, but they, in reality, they would not be giving us two grants.
Two, right.
Yeah, right, so
That makes sense, I'm not sure we ever said that, but I think
That's why I brought it up, yeah, that was exactly why I put it on here tonight, 'cause I wasn't quite sure, but I made that clear. Now, the other thing is the, um, uh, along that line, um, we still don't have a budget unless somebody serves anything different in the state. No, okay. And I know when I had spoken to, uh, people at the Parkland Community Development, um, I was going to be applying for a DCNR grant, which comes from the state, and I was also going to be applying for a CDPG, which comes from the county, but the funding comes from the state. And when we had a meeting up in Westchester, uh, a couple weeks ago, um, they mentioned that this funding is being tied up, because they're still in a budget, so, um, I'm concerned about that, um, and, you know, whether we would, would get it, what, how it's gonna hold up, anything, so I talked to Paul today, and I also checked with Artie, um, that, to see, and I passed around, uh, the cost, the projected cost that came from our engineers for the sidewalks over there in the park. And I, um, checked with Artie, we do have money in gift fund that would cover that cost. And I just think we need to be aware of all that's going on, and, uh, we need to make sure we do get this, um, playground, you know, that project continued, and I think, obviously, we need to have the sidewalks, the handicap sidewalks, so the people that it's being built for, not just them, but everybody, that they can have access to them.
Yes, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, uh-huh, yeah. So, um, I, I'm suggesting that we don't apply for grants for that, because I don't see that as being good this year because of the budget issues. And I think that we should use the money that we have out of, um, the gift fund that we still have, and it's a hundred thousand dollars that would cover And it's a hundred thousand dollars that would cover, if it covered, what they have given us here, this estimate. So, that's my suggestion.
This has to be bid out.
Yes, it would, yeah.
Where's the money coming from?
She's, there's a gift fund, and it could also come out of the capital fund, so. And either one of those, and if that's something you want to pass on to finance for Thursday night, or whatever you wanna do. But I do think it's very important, I mean, Paul, you know, really wants that, and that's not just Paul, but I mean, the community.
Is that gonna include the yellow sidewalk in this part?
Yes, because that's gonna be necessary too. There's not a lot of parking just on Route seventy-two, so. You're gonna need to make sure that the people that need to use that can get to it.
No, because I'm always paying about you though.
Well, I was gonna say, knowing that some of the other issues we have coming up later on the agenda, I'd like to see this come to. Financing, I could take a look at it and make sure we have a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I sometimes feel like I'm missing things. And, well, no, but in regards to the park, I think it's phenomenal, I think it's awesome, I think it's fantastic. I think it's something that we need. I'm not sure I've heard yet how it's being fun, like how that project. And they're funding it entirely?
Yes.
Because I haven't heard that yet. I've heard that they're raising it, yeah, right.
They have, they have a fund, they have, they. Can I, can I? Because your question is valid, and they're in a process of raising funds now. I think it was, I saw it, maybe it was the end of January, beginning of February, a letter, a fundraising letter went out to all the local businesses to try to raise money. And they're taking the forefront of trying to pay for it now. Do they have all the money for what's projected cost? Not to my knowledge.
So, would we, so would we start to earmark this before we know that that's gonna be a successful, successfully completed project, like?
Don't we want to do the two of them together?
Yeah, that's what we're trying, that's what I'm.
Yeah, that would be done, so.
Well, so.
So they would have to make, we would have to know that they have their funds in place. For sure. Particularly for the inside, I have to say, and you're gonna probably kick me for saying this, but this big yellow line coming down Coach Street is, there's no sidewalks on this road, and that's for old land.
Yes.
So we should.
We should have the sidewalk there, so.
Yes, yes, we should.
I don't know that we made the wait.
Or can we do that separately?
Well, I know, well, I know.
That's a, we.
Well, we can do that, we can do that at any time, yeah, but I, I think you'd probably get a better bid if you, if you waited, but yes, we can't do that anytime.
So this bid includes that yellow line?
No, there's two bids, there's two, there's two problems and costs.
I'm questioning how we know.
One there and one there?
Yeah, which one includes that?
The yellow one is the, is the more expensive, because it has to be done after sidewalk specifications.
Yep.
I'm questioning how we can get a bid out on the sidewalk replacement through the park, when in my understanding, I don't believe the footprint for the new playground has been set in stone yet.
That footprint right there.
Or have been approved.
I, I'm just saying that in the special project meetings, I believe that that footprint is in question.
Yeah, and that would all be, yeah, Paul's working on that, right, you're right, you're right.
It's close. It's close.
Yeah.
But I would hate to see us go and do all this replacement and find out that now we gotta rip it up.
And that all comes back in council for approval, correct?
Yes.
So, but. That yellow.
The yellow line, right, yeah.
Well, I'm not talking about the yellow line, the red dotted line here already exists.
Yep.
Yes, right.
That's not, that's not new, not, not that I wanna do it before said project is set in stone, but you're not making new, you're just improving the existing.
I'm just. I'm questioning how we know we've got a quantity of itunes walkway of three hundred sixty. How do we know that that's the number we need, and it's not four hundred? I mean, I think we just, they wanna take this, they wanna take this to finance.
Yeah.
And there's no sense doing this part until the playground is final. The yellow sidewalk could be done now, yes.
The only thing, the reason I brought it up is because if, if you would want me to put in for the grant, which I think really doesn't make sense this year, to be honest with you, then I'd need to know, you know, because it has to be in by April. So that is why I brought it up this month and now.
Could I, if, if the funding is not gonna be complete this year for the side, then, then let's wait till like January of next year and say, well, you know, the state has its budget now, then let's go for the grant. You know, it's gonna be twenty seventeen until the playground gets in. I'm just.
Now, I already.
Is it gonna be twenty seventeen?
I mean, I don't know what to.
I already, I've already factored that in if I may finish, because, yeah, that, that was exactly, if I was applying for it this year, it would be done next year. And I know they don't have everything finished. I really, I'm not sure how much they're going to have done this year. But I would have to put the grant in in April to get it for next year.
Is there something else that you'd want to use that funding for?
No, not through DCNR, no.
Now, I mean, this is a question, I don't know if you know the answer to. If the budget's not passed, nobody can apply for the grant in April.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Is it gonna be postponed till June or the middle of July?
Exactly, that's what I'm.
If the budget ever gets passed, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we already, yeah.
That's still not, that's still not something.
By different last year.
You know, it's still working.
That's what we need, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. I'm just looking at it, I'm trying to, to see if you all want this project. It is not done yet. Paul, that's Paul's project, I mean, special projects. So, but I needed to know if I was to continue to put this grant in, and what I'm hearing is that, no, that's okay, that I don't.
I would say apply for the grant. I mean, we don't even know how soon Paul's gonna have the money to complete that.
Well.
It could be another two years.
No, no, we, we know already, they have fifty thousand, they already have fifty thousand dollars. That was brought up here, but I'm not sure everybody was here.
Yeah, no, yes.
But, and, and they're collecting more, and the road.
How much does he need?
Hundred, about a hundred and seventy, but that's, that's what they're working on. And Paul goes to those meetings on all that, and.
I would say apply for the grant.
So, Betty, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
If. Let me see how I'm gonna phrase it, I'm sorry. If you were to put in the grant for April, even though there's no state budget, and they pass a state budget, let's say in May or June or whatever, this preceding year, does having it in by the due date have any advantage?
No, not this year. I really, I can't, I'm giving you my experience from other grants, and I don't think it would for either that or the CDPG. We were already told that that one comes from the county Community Development Block Grant, and I usually put in for them. But they even said, and that was a couple of weeks ago, because there had been no budget in the state, that they did not know for sure if they were gonna even open that, and that that would be a problem getting that funding. So if they're saying that, they know, I can't see where we would get it, you know, through DCNR. I, I just don't think it's a.
If you're talking, I agree with, I agree with Gary that this whole section.
Yeah.
Should be done now, and if we're gonna use gift money, let's do it, and then let's wait and see on the others. See when, when the state passes the budget, and also see when the playground's gonna be.
Yes.
When they're looking at being.
Right, we're gonna discuss it, and I think that's good to hand it off to finance, and we'll discuss the rest of it there, and then Paul can also, you know, put Gary, or talk Gary where the, Gary, where they are with that.
I know, it can be long for a while, but.
Okay, yeah.
Gary again?
Yeah, that guy up there in the black shirt, yeah.
So there's nothing, no decisions on that one?
Right.
Back to finance. Okay, and B, we have a PO for a safe.
Yes.
Surety safe.
I don't know, did you all get a copy of it? Okay.
I have two copies of that.
Well, they're good. Okay, it's PM number zero two zero six one three, and the amount of two thousand nine dollars. And it's to replace this safe, it's smaller, which is what we're trying to do, we're trying to get, you know, this room ready to rehab. And Artie had checked a number of different places, this was the one that fit, and it was smaller, and that worked for what they have to put in. So, and that is coming out of gift money. So, if you.
What's gonna happen that same?
We're trying to figure out who wants to break their back taking it somewhere. We've talked to Public Works, it could go down there. Yeah, so. We also have this, this is a map cabinet here, and it does have maps in there, and we will be getting rid of, well, taking that down to Public Works too.
Think that's something that police could use?
Well, they can, yeah, we'd certainly give them, whoever wants it, yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
Auction, auction, sell, you can bet.
Well, I, I don't know, because we are also, you'll see in the next, the next purchase order is for the, the building that we're setting up for our files. You know, and so that is something that could conceivably go there too, if we have to keep agreements and things like that.
I think that'd be a good idea to prepare.
Whatever, yeah, police needs, and certainly that would be, make sense too, so.
Is this coming out of gift money?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept PO number zero two zero six one three, payable to Nationwide Safes and Security, in the amount of two thousand nine dollars, for an eight and a half foot, two foot safe.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve PO zero two zero six one three, any discussion, any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Come at wheels.
Motion carries. It's working, it's getting better.
Yeah, you would think it wouldn't, because you don't wanna.
You don't wanna wheel it out.
I'm kidding.
They're heavy. You'll need your friends from Public Works.
Yeah.
All right, I see the PO zero two zero five eight three for wiring a public, the records building at Public Works.
Yes.
For seventeen hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's to put electric in there, so we can actually have light when we're trying to look at the files.
And that unit could finally run?
Yeah, yeah.
The what can run?
Was it two years ago, about that?
Yeah.
I didn't, well, for a while, I got it for you, the heating and air conditioning unit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't have any electric, so that's what this is for, yeah. And they did check with a couple.
Or is that they're cranking, you know?
Yeah, well, like I told the guys, they could just do that, little hamster cage.
Is that deep base seat with no electricity?
Really? I think with the car, it would've worse.
All right, I have a motion on this one.
Make a motion, we approve PO zero two zero five eight three for Cook Service Company for wiring the new records building at Public Works for seventeen hundred dollars.
I second that.
We have a motion in second, any other discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and D, the purchase order zero two zero five eight seven for a backhoe.
This is for a new backhoe for the Public Works Department. This is also used by the water department as well, which is why they're using part of the water fund for it as well. The one we have today has rusted out floors, they welded in new floors, and those are rusted out, so they're requesting to get a new.
How much money is in those accounts?
The money is in there.
Can I ask that we talk about the other POs that Randy has also brought to us, because.
Yeah, can we talk, yeah, we need to talk about all these together, because we.
It was discussed at another, what was it, Public Works meeting, and I'm not sure if I've seen it discussed at another meeting yet, it was, down at Public Works, but yeah. If you wanna bring it into finance and then maybe approve it, if, if you're so inclined, I'm just saying. If you want, if you're so inclined, and then.
Which was the other one, I have one.
Whether or not finance.
The add, yeah.
Continue to finance.
You got one, the other two.
I saw them already.
I mean, we got over two hundred thousand more, so, of, or POs here that aren't in the budget, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, that, they're, the money is in the, yes, it's in the gift funds, I'm not sure what you're looking at there, but. This is in, this is, Artie had already looked to see if this money was in the water and the Public Works, and it is, it's there. I think they're taking it out of the water capital.
Yeah.
Part of it is that, and part of it is in Public Works, because they will use these equipment this year.
And the gift fund?
No, I think it's water, it's water and Public Works, but.
Streets, streets and waters, I would.
Whatever you wish.
Personally, like to look at this and finance, and see what accounts are coming out.
Yeah.
Because I don't have the account balances, and I can't tell you that, yes.
So three POs that were.
Hold off till next week?
Yeah.
That's agreeable, everybody, can I take these?
Absolutely, sir.
We can wait, will you?
Do you want this one as well?
Oh, you have another one?
I have the third one that we just discussed. And this is the information on it, so does everybody have that?
I have that.
Yeah, you have that.
I have that.
All right. All right, so we will put that on for next week. Oxford Library uses park, uses Memorial Park.
Yes, we have a, I'm not gonna remember what it is, we'll be picking them up for a bit. I think it's a hundred dollar charge for people to use the Memorial Park. I would like to have that waived for the library, because they're actually holding a, an activity, a community event there. So I don't think that the library should have to pay for that, because it is a community event, and I believe it's a, it's a teaching event that they have every year, that they're gonna be holding it at the Memorial Park. So I would just like to have that waived.
And that would be a fee for special, for a special event?
No, this is a library, I'm now like.
The, the fee that we're asking for, is that the special events fee?
The affiliate.
There's actually two fees, right? Special events fee and the park rental fee.
So I don't know that I know anything about the park rental fee.
It's in the.
Park rental fees, yeah.
The Memorial Park has a rental fee.
In what resolution?
It's okay, the Memorial Park has a resolution, it's actually on my website.
A rental fee.
There in the, the Memorial Park bit. But, yeah, they usually, any, any time we, like anybody rents it, like a family or whatever, rents the, the park. And this is just the library that would be renting the park. And that we would like to waive that fee for them, instead of having them have to pay that, because it's a, it's a fee for the community, I mean, it's a project of the community that they're doing.
I say we waive the fee, and then they start to fill out a special permit, they can go.
I, we don't have people fill that out at the park, like families, we don't have families do that.
Well.
So I don't know, that's something new, we have not said that on our Memorial Park registration.
That's why I'm doing two different things.
But where's the apple, the apple fests is held in Memorial Park?
Yeah, that is, but that's, that's not, yeah, that's a.
They're not selling anything, they haven't.
I'm saying, the, the, the permit, the, the special events permit has nothing to do with selling anything.
Well, we have, we, on our.
Well, if they waive that fee too.
Yeah.
On our, yeah, on our.
That's what I'm saying, trying to.
I don't know that, why they would have to fill out an event, because we have the senior center that you, I mean, we have different people that have rent the park for a get-together, and they don't have to fill out, it's not a special event. But if you want them to do that, then I will have them do.
The number of people in the library.
Yeah.
They were logging your family or.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like the church of the school, and then we, we don't have that on that information now, and it has.
For special events, there's a threshold of people. If it's over, I think it's two hundred people that has to be.
Yeah, it's.
So, they say here, over fifty people.
Yeah.
So, if they expect over two hundred people, that is my question.
It's like their own personal party, isn't it?
Yeah.
Memorial Park permit, yeah.
It's like the school uses.
Yeah, it's like the school uses it, or, yeah.
Is there two fees for that, like one's less than so many, then one over so many?
According the permit for the Memorial Park, a non-refundable fee of forty dollars is required for the use of the park, including the pavilion. A one hundred dollar trash and damage deposit will be required for organizations or groups of over fifty people, and will be refunded as long as the park is cleaned and trash removed. If trash is not removed, the deposit will pay for borough employees to clean up trash and put the park in order.
If, but, yeah, that's what we have. So if, if you want them to do that, I mean, it doesn't matter, if you want them to do it, I'll pay for it, because it is a community event, it's not.
I don't think it's a bad idea to, to waive the, the rental fee. It may not be a bad idea to ask for the deposit, just in the event that we do have to do cleanup afterwards.
Well, I think that's the thing that is, that's a hundred dollars you're talking for that, and that might be hard, so, well, I'll pay that for them. If you don't want.
Where's the refund?
Well, whatever, but I mean, if you don't, if you don't wanna waive all of that, I'm, I'm just saying, I, it's a library, we've never done that before, we have, we have projects, I mean, library things in the park every summer, that's what they do.
I'm just trying to keep from going down that slippery slope of.
Well, yeah, might be one.
When do we say you have to?
Okay, so I'll have them come in and.
I'm positive.
No, I think we're discussing it, I only made a decision, I mean, I think.
Yeah, he feels that, well, I feel like, let's waive the fees, and if, if, just, you know, they're responsible organizations. Yeah, he feels that, well, I feel like let's waive the fees, and if, if, just, you know, they're responsible organizations, just make sure they leave the park the way they found it.
I guess you need a vet, yeah.
The only question I have is do they need a special events?
No.
Because of number of people.
It's not like they're home. Level one C three, so they don't need a special event.
No, they have, they'll still have to fill out.
They'll start filling that, yes.
This is not, wait, this is not like they're setting up an event and they're writing the public. It is.
Yeah, this.
So what did you think it was for? Well.
What is that like then?
But it's their end of summer reading program, it's their summer reading club.
People that have already been involved in their program, it's not like.
It's not a public event, it's their summer reading club.
Just like if you had your church group that wanted to have a Sunday school picnic there, it's the same thing.
I mean, ACE had, ACE had a cookout there a couple of years ago to celebrate the passing of the, the law for human trafficking, and.
I'll help you, I hope you paid for that.
We did, and I got the cancel check for it. But, um, I mean, I, I would like to see us waive any financial responsibility for the library. We've seen all of the good things they do in this community.
Oh, they're not changing.
And we've seen how they clean up even areas that are not their responsibility, so I, I, I would be perfectly okay with not charging them a penny.
Thank you, make a, make a motion.
I just wanna be consistent, that's my concern, you know, we go back, we, we just, we have to, we, we can't wait, we, we need to make a decision as council of who we're gonna waive for and who we're not gonna waive for. So if we're only really gonna charge, I don't know who we're charging. Who's left? I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a good borough resident, should I be able to have a free birthday party, because I'm a good.
People do have birthday parties there.
But they, they have to pay, right?
Give us an example, give us an example, people that rent the park, birthday parties, family reunions, blah, blah, blah.
The T L's.
We used to.
You know.
Yeah. Oh, we don't anymore.
Yeah, that's what it is, it's, it's, and it's the senior center, it might be, yeah, it's a senior center, they have, they have their little get-together, um, for, um, I guess their, their family picnic, or their picnic, you know, in the summer, I don't know. Where rents it, where Village to have, they have a picnic for their employees, you know, but, um, that's up to all of you. I'm not gonna speak on this, you do what you want, and I will do it.
Do we get the deposit for the cleanup from the Apple Festival? Or do you not?
That, that, that Mary paid the.
That's a whole different, to me, that's a whole different thing, and they're, they're, they're renting out spaces to vendors, they're making money. To me, I'm not worried about whether they're paying that fee to rent the park, because I say, I'm with you, we waived that, this is the library, we waived that. I'm more concerned about the non-refundable deposit, because I'd hate to see that borough residents who were not able to attend an event, I'm not saying the library would do this, I'm saying that if there's an event held in the park that's exclusive to a certain sector of our population, I'd hate to see our taxpayers as a whole in the borough have to pay for cleanup of the park, because our employees now have to go out and do that, because we didn't get a deposit that was refundable, if someone did what they're supposed to do.
Maybe I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry, I.
The Apple Festival, do they put down the hundred dollar deposit?
I will check that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure they always get, everybody always gets that back.
Right, because they, everybody really does.
They clean it up, yeah, they're all responsible, yeah.
And, and again, it's not.
But I will double check that without.
I'm not questioning anyone's responsibility in, in doing the right thing, I just wanna make sure that we're covered, if we have to do it.
I agree.
There's that one time, and that one time is when we're gonna burn.
Yeah.
To me, it's easier just to say, just write us a check and we'll give it back to you the day after.
So what if the, so what if the library just went to the park and used the park? Like, what, like, I think of the Sunday school days where we used to take the whole Sunday school over during, you know, the two hours, our, you know, our free time, and we used the park.
They could, they could, but they, but if somebody else has a, but if somebody else has a book for that day, they're out of luck.
Yeah, school.
You know, you can't, you can sort of plan that and say, well, we're, we're, because it's a public park, they could walk in and do that, but.
It's like going to ninety M Park, you go there and use the pavilion, but if someone shows up and says, we have a reserve.
You're not renting the park, you're renting the pavilion.
Yeah.
If you sit around on blankets, you can do it. I mean, I think we're spending a lot of time on something that.
Well, it's, but I, I get it, Ron, but you know, you, but next week, somebody's gonna walk in and ask the same question, I'm gonna say.
This is an organization we give money to, we don't give money to any churches, we don't give money to, we give money to whom I, we give money to the library. Those are the two organizations.
Senior Center.
Senior Center.
We're not asking to pay anything.
I, I make a motion that we waive the, the forty dollar fee for use of the park, but we require the refundable hundred dollar deposit for cleanup in the event it's not done.
Second.
I disagree with that, because.
Well, we can vote, we have a motion in a second, and now we have some more discussion.
Yeah, I disagree with that, because we're not talking about an organization that's just flying through, we're talking about the library. If there's something not right about the park, we can go to the library and we can say, send Charlie over to clean up the park.
And I don't disagree with you, but what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying not to set precedent, and like Sue was saying, where do we draw the line? I, I think we've got at least some direction as to what entities that we do waive fees for, that being the library, the senior center, things like that, that we already donate to. I think when we're talking about non-refundable, deposit, refundable deposit, that, that's an entirely different animal there, and we, we can't, we've gotta draw a line somewhere, and I'm with Sue, we.
I, I don't know what to, I, I, I really don't know what my position is, just that I want it to be consistent.
That, and that's my.
That's really my, I mean, I don't care if we waive the whole kit and caboodle, but I just want to know that when the next, the next organization walks in, like Neighborhood Services Center, we give money to them, so they wanna have an event in the park. They walk in, they wanna have an event in the park, let's be prepared that we're gonna waive all of their fees. Who else we give money to?
Depends what they're doing, it depends what they're doing, because if they're having an event as a fundraiser and they're having fifty vendors in there.
Line. Well, if it's not, yeah, if it's not a transient business thing, that's a different thing, but if they're having an event that they need to rent the.
Pavilion.
The pavilion for.
For their employees or whatever.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna waive that.
You must think something might help you.
Make them pay the one hundred dollars, I will pay it. No, 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 wait, listen, no, I'm, no, I'm gonna give it, I'm gonna give the deposit.
It's refundable.
What I'm saying is, we've made all these resolutions and made all of these ordinances, and, and this particular one, we went through there and took a lot of stuff out, so we wouldn't have to give waivers. To me, you should give no waiver, but as long as it gets funded, that's the main thing, you don't give them a waiver, but it will be funded, however it gets done, it will be funded, but if you start giving waivers to, to one group, somebody's gonna come back in and say, well, why did they?
God, did me and Randy Till just agree. We did, we just agreed, Randy.
Again, that's the second time in our life.
I know. It's happening more frequently, I don't know what to say about that.
But, what I'm saying is, I, I, I think you have to, you have to have that deposit. You know, and, and I think, and, but it'll be taken care of, it won't, it, they won't have to take anything out of, out of cash.
I'm with you, Randy, I'll do it too, I'll, I'll put a half of it for myself, because I'm, I'm with you, I trust.
Yeah.
I'll put a hundred.
I give it to my wife anyhow.
We make it a Randy one, how's that?
I, I have two points, right, point number one in the letter here, they're not asking for a request of waiver of anything. There's nothing, there's no mention of fees in there. Point number two is they're asking for usage of the parks for, for two dates, August thirteenth and July twentieth. That's all that's being asked for in this letter, I think Betsy brought up that she wanted.
They asked me, they called me, I know, it's not in there.
But it's not in the letter here, so I'm.
Yeah, they asked me.
But it's, it's, we're talking about two dates, so it's basically whatever we've just discussed for the last twenty minutes doubled, because we only talked about one date.
So let me say something, the hundred dollar trash and damage deposit will be required for only over fifty, so that's only one date, because the other one is limited to twenty people or fewer participants, so we're still back to a hundred dollars for one day.
Plus the park.
Plus the park event for two days, so it's a waiving of eighty dollars, and Randy's are gonna pay the hundred dollars. I think we have to keep.
So why have ordinances?
Uh, I don't know, I, I, I've been saying that for the last two hours. He said, so why have ordinances?
Well, now, I, I'm saying, you want, now, I'll tell them, I'll call them and tell them to come out and fill out the special event permit, if that's what you think.
I know, we're not talking.
No, we're not.
Oh, like, well, no, but somebody did mention that.
Parking event, I mean, the Memorial Park thing, that's what we're talking about.
We don't see that.
Oh, no, but you did mention that earlier, that was mentioned, so.
He asked about it.
Who's asked, who wants to ask?
Yeah, but that's what, we don't, we don't wanna do that.
No, we decided.
No, we're trying to resolve this.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure of.
All right, we gotta move on, let's call a question here, we have a motion, uh, and how does the motion state again, that we waive the?
That we waive the forty dollar fee for the rental of the park, including pavilion, for the use of the park, including pavilion, but we require the hundred dollar trash and damage deposit.
My second to that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
We all have a, the motion failed, so.
More nays.
More nays.
All right, so the motion failed, do we, do we have another, do we only have to come up with another motion to waive both fees, or? You're saying, no, you're gonna do it.
No, we just got done, okay.
We just got done.
We just got done saying, why are we having ordinances if, if we're not gonna have an ordinance? If, if we wanna waive it, i- if people are willing to pay things, then people should pay it, so, I, I think we keep what the permit for the park is, they, they didn't ask us to waive the forty dollars for each event.
That was my fault, they did ask me on the phone, I didn't know it wasn't on the, uh, P M, I'm sorry.
I think as council, I think it's, I think it's nice for us to be able to do that on certain, certain, certain events to waive fees, if you feel it's necessary, I mean, I, that's, I mean, I, I know that Randy would rather, Randy Till, sorry. You know, I know it's in the ordinance, but, you know, I think it's, it'd be nice, it's nice to waive fees for certain groups that are, that, that do a lot for, for the community. And only, the only reason I agree with Randy is I think that, that we give a hundred dollar deposit for just in case something happens, and then they get refunded, we're not, they're not gonna be charged or anything.
So I think we go back to, so I think we go back to, maybe we clarified that we only, we only use fees for the public, for a private, for somebody who's privately sponsoring an event or privately renting the park, because, I mean, we went through, again, these are two separate things, but we just talked about the transient retail and the special permit, and we made all those exceptions, which left us with very minimal for even having a fee, why, so we're, we're gonna charge, we're gonna charge essentially somebody to have a birthday party for thirty kids.
But you, you can say that to anything we've done, you can say that to the same.
So why don't we have the ordinance though?
The Oxford terrorists, when they came to us about waiving their fees.
And we didn't.
I know, but if they would've been all in order and they always did everything fine, we were on the verge of waiving the fees, cause they.
I wasn't on the verge of waiving.
They remember how we didn't waive, raise the fees, because they were, they didn't pay us, they were, they weren't letting us do inspections, and that was the reason why we said, look, we're not waiving any fees.
I'm just trying to figure out who we would take a fee from.
There, there is another point to be made about this whole conversation, you're actually charging Chester County, you're not charging the library, you're charging Chester County, the government. Do you charge the government for use? Chester County Library, Oxford Library is part of Chester County Library, and it's a government subsidy. So do you charge, do you charge the government to rent the park?
Each library raises their own budget too, I mean, they get money from the county, but.
Motion was that, that.
Well, they have five of us three. They're not five of us three.
Yeah, do you charge county, do you charge county government to use your park? All right, are we done with this, or are we gonna have a different motion, or are we moving on?
I was just looking for direction, I'm so sorry.
I, I'm.
Don't be sorry, it's good conversation, I mean, it, it brings us back to it every time, that we don't, we ha- we have to be consistent or at least have a justification for when we aren't consistent, and that's all I'm asking.
All right, I make a motion, we charge for the, for the rental of the pavilion and charge them a hundred dollars.
We don't need a motion.
That's already in an ordinance.
That's what goes on with this.
No motion then.
Given that we haven't approved anything, then we have to have them bill out the permit and pay the fees, the forty dollars and the hundred dollar deposit.
For the one time.
No, that'd be forty dollars for two.
Forty dollars for two, a hundred dollars for one.
I would like to make a motion that we waive the requirement of the fees and the deposits for the Oxford Library, because we are a community and that speaks to unity, and as Mr. Till pointed out, they are part of Chester County. So I think it puts them in a different category than most people who apply to use the park, so I don't think that we're shading a precedent there. So I would like to make a motion that we waive their fees for both events on August thirteenth and on July twentieth.
What about the deposit?
And the deposit.
I'll second it, anybody else? No other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Let's move on, uh, item F, review ordinance to many curtsies, adoption. Back to you, Sue.
Pardon's gracious. It's, you know, you, you don't like to do anything tonight.
Is this just, uh?
You just have it, uh, because it's coming up next week for you to.
For adoption, yeah. This one, Randy.
It has been advertised, or it will.
Yeah.
So it's just sort of a reminder to you that it's coming up next week.
Okay, item G, rental properties.
Yeah, um, I, we had a discussion in the codes office with Corporal Brown today, um, who came in requesting some information because of an incident that happened over the weekend, and it has come to my attention, time and time again, that we have a huge problem here, um, and I would say that problem is human trafficking. We are seeing people buy up properties, um, that are, um, buying up properties in other states, they have, we have issues with, um, um, this weekend, it was, from what I had heard, a near riot, uh, police officer, one police officer went to take care of it. Um, there were forty people there approximately, and he told them to go home, whoever didn't live there to go home, and they all said they lived there, so now that is just one piece of this puzzle, that I have been saying for a couple of years now, that we have a problem, this is happening on a, a property on Pine Street, a property on Maryland Avenue, a property on Market Street, and some other streets in town, where we are not getting the full cooperation from the property, and we are also not getting, um, reports that we need from, um, the police department. We have a disorderly conduct ordinance, and I've mentioned before, we need to get reports from rental properties in order for us to be able to move forward in the process that's recognized in that ordinance. Um, that is not happening, and, um, as long as it doesn't happen, we, we're really having huge problems here. And I think it's only gonna get worse in the summer, we, Corporal Brown had mentioned that, he came in for another issue today, and, um, a different property, not the one that was attended to on Market Street, but, um, and in part of that conversation is that we, we've listed a number of properties where we're going to have one officer perhaps going out to deal with, you know, a number of people. And we need to get the support of the police department with filling out those reports and giving us anything that's on a rental property. I think it's come to that point now where anytime a police officer is called out to a rental property, we need to get a report on that, by we, I mean the codes office, and, and Mary does get that sometimes, the police will come in and that, they need information from her to follow through on what they're doing and vice versa, so, you know, there is that, but we need to get that report, and we're not getting that, and we have to have that, that is what our ordinance calls for, so we're really stuck without, without getting that. We also need to recognize that the whole reason we do this rental property inspection is just for this reason, um, to, to make sure we know who are living in these rental properties. Um, to, to make sure we know who are living in these rental properties. And as we had this discussion today, we, we recognize that there are a number of properties where people come in, and they sleep in these apartments in shifts. That's why you could possibly have people, the forty people, saying that they're in, they all live in these three apartments, because they're sleeping there in shifts. We need to stop this, because it's, it's absolutely destroying the integrity of this borough. I mean, it's, it's, it's not safe, along with, with, um, the number of people staying in these apartments. You also have drug problems, you have, um, neighbor problems, you have noise problems, we're dealing with all of that, and, and the police are too. And I was really concerned to hear that one police officer was, was there, and I'm sure that's because the other one was busy. But one police officer went and probably had no idea he was gonna be met with forty people.
Did you get a report from that?
Not yet, not yet, I'm sure, working on it, but that just happened, so. But we, we need to get these disorderly conduct reports. Every time someone goes to a rental property in the borough of Oxford, we need to get a report.
How do you know you're not getting one?
That's what I was gonna say, how do you know that you're not getting one?
Cause we, we've had that issue before, where we asked, the mayor, the mayor and I had discussions, we, we knew that, we, we, yeah.
Yeah, but how do you know?
Well, if they, if, if they, if they go to, uh, uh, we had a similar situation with what occurred on Broad Street, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it was Broad Street. And, you know, if, if the officer, officer's judgment is that it doesn't arise to disorderly conduct, he or she, should they fill a report, just saying that they were called to that?
Uh, we would like that, yes.
I mean, I guess, I was gonna say.
But I think we need that at this point, yeah.
I was gonna say, can we have, like, basically, if there's any calls with, um, that even comes close to the criteria to meet that ordinance, that, that, um, the codes office would get a report, put in the file for that building?
Yeah.
If it leads to disorderly conduct portion, yes.
I would, I would say though, Mayor, at this time, with, with a number of problems that we're having, and what, what we presume is gonna be happening this summer, I mean, and that's from your officer's mouth, not me. Cause I don't know, and, um, and that's why I'm bringing it here tonight, you know. But, uh, we need, any, anytime you go to a rental property, we need to have that, so we can build up, and we become aware that there is a situation going on. So if there is a really bad situation, we have something to go back on, cause we get, we're getting no reports at all. And we, we get an exchange, maybe coming from an officer with Mary, and, and, you know, a discussion because they need information. And that's another thing, trying to find out who owns these properties, they're not even in this country. And we've seen this, I, I brought it up last year, um, uh, it is a, it is a full-time job. We, we have got to consider having at least Mary go full-time, because there is no way we can stay on top of this. And it's a serious situation, it's a very serious situation. Peggy, you can speak to hu- human trafficking, and we see it, and, and Officer Brown, or Corporal Brown said, you know, he sees the vans pulling up to these properties, and picking up all of these people, and taking them, they, you know, he knows.
Scott Rand just did a rental inspection, didn't he? Does, he did, just get a whole bunch of rental inspections from the member now?
He, he's, yeah.
Did he note, did he note anything about any houses that?
Well, that's, that, this is, this is the issue. He goes in during the day, so this is, this is something more serious, this is where we, we need, um, to have a discussion, a special discussion on this. Because it is a very serious problem that will just destroy the fiber of our community.
No, I'm saying is, Scott just did.
We would not see it during the day, is what you're asking.
So I'm saying, he has, how do you go about that?
Yes.
That's a big question.
If you have, if you have a house, hold on, if you have a house that has forty people in it, and you go through rental inspection every two years, and there's no problems, and they cause no problems in the community, how do you expect to, to change, you know what I mean by that?
We need to, we need to check our ordinances, and we need to be able to go in and look at these properties, you know, and not just in, you know, and when we set up the appointments. We need to be able, we need to check with our solicitor, but I thi- I know that we already are able to go in.
I got it too. Now, right here.
Yeah.
Six one eleven is the ordinance, disruptive conduct in residential rental properties, exactly what you're talking about.
Yes.
Disruptive conduct report, a written report of disruptive conduct on a form to be prescribed, therefore, to be completed by the code enforcement officer or police.
Mm-hmm.
Now, mind you, before this, it states who can be contacted, and it's the code enforcement officer or police. So in my opinion, whoever responds to it should do the report.
Yes, yes.
It says, as the case may be, who investigates an alleged incident of disruptive conduct, and which shall be maintained by the code enforcement officer. So this supports what you're asking for, in that being that the police go to a disruptive conduct report out of rental property.
Yes.
That they should be providing a report to the code enforcement officer.
Yes.
According to this ordinance.
And that's what we're, and that's what we're looking for.
I guess, and then the question becomes, how do the police know if it's a rental property? So anytime they, anytime they respond to, uh, that kind of, uh, situation, then they need to file a report, and then codes will decide, codes will decide whether it's a rental property or not.
We can get that.
I would, I would imagine that the police would ask, who's the owner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I need to speak to the owner of the property.
I ran here.
Well, people lie about that too.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but I, uh, that, that's a minor thing, we, we can, we can give them a list of all the rental properties, we have that, Mary has that in Excel, and.
The mayor has a question about definition of disruptive conduct. Uh, it does state, any form of conduct, action, incident, or behavior perpetrated, caused, or permitted by any tenant, guest, or owner of a residential rental unit that is so loud, untimely as to the hour of the day, offensive, riotous, or that otherwise deserves other persons, persons of reasonable sensibility, and their peaceful enjoyment of their premises, such that a report is made to the police and or to the code enforcement officer complaining of such conduct, action, incident, or behavior. No disruptive conduct shall be deemed to have occurred unless the code enforcement officer or police shall investigate and make a determination that such did occur, and keep written records, including a disruptive conduct report of such occurrences.
And what I'm saying, um, and, this is just what I'm saying, so just, if everyone would listen to me and hear me out here. But what I'm saying is if someone is called to a rental property, because someone says there's disruptive conduct going on there, I think the codes office should get that. And I understand, and I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes, but I'm saying, if you're having someone call, I can guarantee you, that person is then gonna call us. It makes it much easier for us if, uh, an officer, like we usually get, many of the officers will stop in and see Mary for one reason or another. But, but if the officer says, I was called there, now, if, if they determine that it's not, you know, that, that's fine.
That doesn't rise to the level of disorderly conduct.
But we need to know, we still need to know, because, we see it.
It's defined, right, so there's two different definitions. So a police officer's gonna cite that if it rises to the level of disorderly conduct, but this doesn't go where the crimes go, this, this is disorderly what?
Disruptive conduct.
Disruptive conduct.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So even, so even though there may not be a, an arrest, or.
All right.
Yeah.
If it's disruptive, that's different than, you know, what's the other one?
Disorderly conduct.
Disorderly, so, I need.
So I have two questions.
When they, or, I had another question, when they show up somewhere, whether there's nothing or not, don't they make some, some kind of report of what they did?
It's, it's law, because.
Right, so.
Then we should get the law, maybe that's, that's a correct, thing, Mayor, yeah.
Just saying what's in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The procedure is, when a borough police officer or the borough cor- code enforcement officer investigate an alleged incident of disruptive conduct, he or she shall complete a disruptive conduct report.
Do we have one of those?
See, that's what I was wondering, do we have that? Upon finding that the reported incident did, in his or her judgment, constitute disruptive conduct as defined herein, the report shall include, if possible, the identity or identities of the alleged perpetrators of the disruptive conduct, and all other obtainable information, including the factual basis for the disruptive conduct. When a police officer conducts such an investigation, said police officer shall submit the completed disruptive conduct report to the code enforcement officer within twenty-four hours of the occurrence of the alleged disruptive conduct. In all cases, the code enforcement officer shall mail a copy of the disruptive conduct report to the owner within three business days of the occurrence of the alleged disruptive conduct. The report shall be sent to the owner by certified mail, return receipt requested.
And you can find them, right?
The incident that we had before was, um, Mr. Quillen, he came in here, it's public knowledge.
If they get too many, then you can find them.
Mr. Quillen came in here, he, he called us, and, and again, I think we just didn't, we weren't working together, we didn't understand, not everybody understood, we didn't have a report, we, we needed a report.
And I think what happened was, like, it was like the officer's discretion to say, well, I don't really feel like, that, and I'm saying that that point was, you know.
Well. Yes. Correct.
I didn't really feel like it was disorderly conduct, so we didn't do a report, that was.
Well, there's a difference between disorderly and disruptive, disruptive is less.
Disruptive. Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we have a very serious situation here, and I don't want us to lose sight of what, that I'm saying, that.
Right. On the other hand, I see, I think we have a problem, and I think it's everywhere in this country. And, and I think, um, when we passed the ordinance here for inspection, I'm, I'm, it was to, to make sure the apartments were safe. You know, code, you know, building codes on that, and that sort of thing, I think it's hard. You know, I've heard, I've talked to people from other municipalities, it's hard to prove, and, and who, police, and how many people actually live there.
We have to do that, that's part of what we do.
What's our codes, what does it say?
How can we prove that? That's the question.
What does our codes allow for people to live?
That's part of, that is part of the problem, Ron, I'm answering his question.
I know, but how do we?
We do that because we, we give them a, a, um, we ask them for the people that are living there. Are they, are they, um, related? That's in our codes, that we can, we can ask that, and that they have, they have to be related. You don't want, uh, uh, children staying in some place with, uh, you know, out, inappropriate supervision.
I thought that form was not having to require them to fill it out, but you, you give it to them, hope they fill it out, but hope they don't fill it out, but we talked about that, that we can't force them to fill it out.
We, okay, well, maybe we need to discuss this.
Yeah, I, I agree.
On something else, but I'm saying, the, this is how we would get that information, you get that information from your property owners that are being honest and forthright with you, and if you don't get that information, you're gonna have human trafficking. And nobody wants to hear that in this town, but we have it, I, we, I never.
I mean, I know, we don't wanna hear it.
But, but, my point is, you could have.
Well, I, I brought it up, and I.
You could have upstanding property owners that, that know that their building is in great shape, and the yard's looking good, and it, I, I'm just, I'm playing the devil's advocate here.
And have forty people.
Okay. I know, it is, I'm just.
It's really hard to, and difficult, I mean, I'm sure the mayor with the police department also knows, it's, it's very difficult to, to know if people wanna pull the wool over your ice, and have more people on there than they're supposed to, it's pretty easy to do.
Well, I think, I think everyone would agree with you on that, but I think what I am saying is, we have a serious situation.
I'm not saying that we don't.
That we need, I know, we're saying the same thing, but I, my concern is that we go further, and that we straighten this out, because we are going to have even more serious problems in this town. So we're, you can, you can ask your police officers, and Mary could, could certainly ask them to come in and, and discuss that in front of you, if you felt that's appropriate, and, you know, because we, we hear this, because they're coming back and forth to Mary.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
The, the first, the first question is, so if we have certain properties that we already are concerned about, why can't we visit them? Why can't we visit them and find out what's going on inside of them?
That's exactly what I'm asking for, that's what I'm asking for.
Mr. President.
All right, and that, that's my first question.
Much of these. Okay.
My second question is, and this is, this is just my ignorance, so bear with me.
Okay.
In, in terms of my upbringing in the world of human trafficking during my social work years, that implies illegal.
Yes.
In my brain, it's illegal. Is it possible that, that numerous people could be living in, a- a- against, I, I take that back, against one's will? They're being trafficked, trafficked against one's will, being held against one's will, not necessarily there voluntarily. We have many large, different kinds of families. I said it was my ignorance, Peggy, so, when you tried, it was to look like, I can't, so, so can we define what we're calling human trafficking in Oxford?
No, it's, I, I didn't say, no, it's, I thought you were meaning.
When I look at it on the definition, it talks about exploitation, recruitment, transferring, harboring, those all sound like they're being done with ill intent.
Okay, which is so happens that we're fortunate to have Peggy Russell.
Absolutely, and, that's why I look at it.
Who's in charge of the ACE, and, and she can answer all those questions, but I will say that the, the, the chief and I went to a human trafficking class in New Jersey, and, yes, it, it happens everywhere, it's not, uh, just other different cultures. Um, and that is what concerns me, that our own children will get involved with this, and that has always been a big concern for ACE. Um, so Peggy could probably respond to that more, and we do have people looking into things, I have gone to our solicitor and asked her to do that.
Ron, you got a question?
Could I use?
Peggy, can you add something?
My comment's discussing time. For this topic.
All right, I'll give you.
All right, number one, if, if the police are called to a property, um, for disorderly conduct, loud noise, or whatever, I think a report should be written, either established or unestablished. If you see that you're going back to that property a number of times, then it's probably family. And you can.
But then, but there are, there are laws, there are laws.
Well.
But there are issues, there's sometimes you get a neighbor who is totally unreasonable, that calls all the time.
And then, you also know who the neighbor is that's calling, and maybe he's a disorderly person, and he's the one that gets spoken to. So you, you can, the way they ate the problem. And another thing, when you, when you're going in for an inspection, you're telling the landlord.
I'm coming.
You're telling, we're coming.
Yeah, right, I'm coming.
Now, when the police go to a house and see forty people, you know they lie. They all live there, so now that has to be investigated, and has to be prosecuted.
But who, how do we investigate?
We need, well, and, and Mayor, we'll make sure, we'll get that report.
Does the police follow?
Like Scott Brown, you know, they come in and say, we had forty people.
And if, if there is a disorderly.
Right.
Whatever that report indicates in the ordinance. I've, I've never seen that disorderly report that is required by the ordinance. Is it just a police report, or, you know, it, it defines what should be in that report, correct, Brandon?
Yes.
And I, I, to this day, I'm not seeing any such report.
Right, so, and, and again, what's the process, if a police officer goes out, and he sees that there's, he gets called, there's forty people, we keep saying forty, let's say twenty-five. Twenty-five people in a building, they all claim that they are residents, they all claim that they live there. The police officer, if there's not something to charge them with, a criminal charge, he can only come back and report to the codes officer. The codes officer can then only go out and inspect it, right?
Actually, he doesn't have to.
And if there's not. He doesn't have to, what?
As part of the rental requirements who obtain a rental permit. And again, this is Oxford Borough Code.
Right.
In addition to other information that may be required as part of the permit application, the following shall be provided. C, number of persons to be occupying the property or unit. Therefore, if there are forty people that are there saying that they're living there, this is their address. And whoever our codes officer is can go back and look at what that permit has, if it doesn't list forty people, now they violated their permit.
Right, yes. So the codes officer has to.
So, the codes off, that's, that's from what I'm, from what I'm gathering, there's a process in place to handle these issues.
Whoever receives, yes. Yeah.
And it doesn't involve doing more inspections. We gotta follow the process.
Yes.
Which is getting the reports from the proper people to the codes officer, and let him handle it per the ordinances we have here.
I thought in the paper we, we talked about a while ago, where there was some, um, landlords, as you said, they, they're not gonna fill this out.
Well, we'll handle it.
Have we had trouble talking about enforcing it, how do we enforce them to fill?
Well, Jeff, you're, you're also asking what, what goes in the report, well, I guess, what is a police report?
Yeah, disorderly conduct report, I guess we.
Or disruptive, disruptive behavior, either one.
That is, well, whatever, we can, we can iron that out, that's something that needs to be ironed out, but I am stressing here tonight, and I can't stress it enough. And you will see this this summer, I don't have to convince you to iron it.
I know, you don't.
But we, what we need is to get, anytime someone is, yeah, you need to get someone, a, a police officer, or, that goes out to any rental properties, we, that, for now, we need to get that report.
Okay, suppose in this case, with the forty people there, and the police come back and report to the codes that there's forty people that said they live in that building.
What's next?
Is that enough to trigger the.
Yeah, we have to have a report, we have to have, we have to have someone writing it.
That's what he's asking, that's what he said.
So he writes, they come back, he fills out, let's say they make their, he fills out a piece of paper.
And they make a report.
I, I thought he meant.
No.
No, I think, I think.
I thought he meant if he said it to them.
You remember sectioning there, that if the code enforcement officer is aware of more people living in the unit, that they have the right to go in and inspect, so the question is.
Well, we, we, but we need a report, write a report.
That doesn't say that, does it?
I'm, I'm telling you that we will need that when we go to.
Yeah, it does.
I mean, I'm, 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 the rental, I'm, I'm, the rental agreement, is, this is to get the agreement to, the permit to allow you to rent.
Now, I have to do some more research, but I don't believe that there is a spot where it says, if you, you know, exceed the number of people in there, that that's enough to write a disruptive conduct report on. That, to me, is the question you're asking.
But I think what.
But part of the report would say, there was a disruptive behavior here. But part of the report would say there was a disruptive behavior here, may not have qualified as disorderly conduct, but there was disruptive behavior there in the, in the process of investigating that, they discovered something else, which is forty people living in one house, then that should be part of the report and then codes can act on that. And they might have to act with the police department, I mean.
Yes, we do, we do have to, and that, that is part of the disruptive conduct, whatever you want to call it.
So even if it wasn't part of what he was that called there for, if he discovers something that.
Yeah. And then we do that to our public works guys, I mean, they, they work, the police and public, everybody works well together because, you know, we go out and we find something that's interest to the police, you know, we do that. And, and in times we've inspected properties and people have jumped out of closets and we called the police for whatever reasons, but.
Is this just, how many, can this be a personal?
No, it's rental properties.
There's a rental property.
No, I'm saying.
So can we go back to the process though?
Yes, it could be.
So police officer goes.
Could be, could be anybody's house.
Police officer responds, it doesn't rise to the level of disruptive conduct, but they write a disruptive, whatever, because they report. Yep, he comes back, he hands it to the codes officer, the codes officer then does, what's next, what happens next?
Follows up with the, with the landlord, keeps it on file, if that's the first one, there's a whole process in there on how you handle it and how it.
So, so what if we can't?
It doesn't, it doesn't stay in here and this supports what you're saying. It doesn't say when they find disruptive conduct. It says when a borough police officer or the borough code enforcement officer investigate an alleged incident of disruptive conduct, he or she shall complete a disruptive conduct report.
There you go.
Upon a finding that reported incident did in his or her judgment constitute disruptive conduct as defined herein. So now, they're reading that whole thing, maybe it does, you have to find.
So, so we would, the codes officer would then reach out to the landlord and say, hey, we got the report that you have forty. So I think you said earlier too, Betsy, is that you're having difficulty reaching those land, the landlords, the new owners, right?
Well, some of that is an issue too, that is an issue too, but, but the real.
How do we help with that?
The real, I don't know, that's, this, this.
All right, apply finding there.
Yeah, this is taking a long time.
We can go to one, where does, where does counsel show in on this basically?
Yes, I mean, I would, I would like to get support, I would like to work with the police department, you know, the chief and, and get this fine tuned, whatever we need, he needs, to get those reports coming to us on a regular basis, so.
I think that's pretty clear, since if you're called.
That's what I'm asking for.
We, we can set up a meeting, I guess I'll go back to the, to the, in the ordinance, it talks about a disruptive behavior report. So what report is counsel looking for in that report? I believe that that, that report, it says here is.
Occurs after the investigation.
A written report of disruptive conduct on a form to be prescribed therefore. So that sounds to me like it's something that needed to be built at the time the ordinance was done, however, it may not be built yet. That's correct.
Yeah.
If not a form.
So could the chief and Betsy?
Absolutely.
Develop a form?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then could, could we, because since we've brought this to the public's attention, which I think it's important that we do, can we specify those, when, when there is a report that is followed through and investigated by the codes enforcement officer, can we then as counsel expect to get a, a result of what that investigation was?
We would get that on the codes officer's monthly report, we would get that as part of that, yes.
And I would think that if somebody made a phone call to the police and said, you know what, there's thirty people out in the front yard here raising cane or there's twenty people out on this porch here raising cane, that I would expect that when the police show up and they see that many people, they're going to go, maybe we got something going on here, who lives here, twenty plus people live here, okay. That to me is enough for me to go, that's a disruptive incident. I think that.
But what, but I, if I may, just to add this a little bit, I'm sorry, but this is very important to me, I'm sorry. I feel very passionate about this because I can see how it's going to destroy our community. But what I would like to know is if we can get the logs. So if, if that, you know, if it starts to show that you're, you're getting the calls, you know, for rental properties only, but if you're, if you're continuing to get a call out to something, that sends up a red flag to us. Then we can, we can investigate at a different time, we can, you know, we can work with the police to investigate at a different time. Because these people, and Peggy, you can jump in anytime, but these people actually take shifts in sleeping in these apartments and it's, it's a.
Well, the other issue is.
It's also in houses.
Yes, it's the same.
Yeah, I guess it is, that's what I said, that's where it is, they're houses, yeah.
And that's people. Let me, let me say something.
Yeah, it's not just apartments, nobody's houses, yes.
This raises the other question. First of all, we got this ordinance that basically says if you're called out to this place too often, the landlord's going to get fined. What happens?
We do, yeah.
Like at this one, that over the weekend where there's supposedly forty people in it. This isn't a one time, this isn't something, sure we need to report on that, but they're out of compliance today.
Yes.
So we need to get in touch with that landlord and say.
Yes.
Today, you, you either get this under control or we're pulling your permit and you can't have a rental unit there.
Yes, yes. Exactly, we know that, but we can't do anything without some kind of a report, a log or something. We had this same issue before, you know, and, and I'm just saying, we need to get that information. We're not, it's not getting to us as a report from the police because we don't just, we can't just send out a letter and say, well, we heard this, you know. We have to say, it's, it's, you know, it was, it was on this day, you know, this off. And if you, if it goes to court or whatever, you have to have all your ducks in a row and say, there was an officer that went out at this time and this is what happened.
But I guess, suppose there is an officer that goes out and I'm thinking about a house is on my street.
Yes, I know, because I had to call the DA's office on that.
And, you know, I know that there have been some citizens that have called and voiced concerns. And basically were told, you really can't do anything. So, you know, what, so if, if I'm aware of a house on my street that I think fifteen or twenty people are living in it and I called the codes office, what will happen with that? Do I need to call the police first?
Well, it depends on what you called the codes office before, because what I actually researched and found out is that there are black vans stopping there that have been stopping there for a number of years. And, no, I'm, I'm answering your question, Jeff, if I may, and they've picked up those people and I actually followed them and I know where they went. And we, we continued to research and I turned that over to our solicitor who then turned it over to the DA. Because it, nothing, nothing else was, yes. But, yeah, but because I wasn't told there were, that there was a van there. I was getting a call about a building, about stuff in the backyard or paint or the lawn wasn't mowed, those are the questions. No, what I needed to know was that a black van had been pulling up there and picking up people there all this time and that the people weren't related and all of that. So we had to do some research to find out who was actually living in there. And if we had been able to work with the police department on that, it might have been a quicker process. Because the calls we were getting were not the call that we needed and it was just about paint and, and things like that, so. And as I said, the real problem here is getting into that property, which is houses and apartments and everything. Getting into that property at different times and not just when you tell them you're coming. That's the real problem here. So this is.
How does that happen?
Yeah.
There are times when, other than.
When we work together with the police department, that's how it happens and working with our solicitor and working with the DA's office, all of that. That's how that happens.
And then if, like, let's say, and I'm like, let's say I have a house, possibly, I'm just using this hypothetical that I think there's way too many people and I just call codes and say.
Yes.
You know, or do I call the police? Do I say, there's violations here, the yard's fine, everything looks fine, but there's definitely way more people than what should be in there.
That, that, yeah, that, you would call them.
Do I call codes or do I call the police?
Well, I will tell you this, if you see a black van coming up to pick people up two or three times a day, you know, and, and taking them other places and bringing them back, I wish you would call the police and us, so.
Because it's trafficking only.
I would like to invite the public to contact Polaris Project. They have a toll-free number, eight 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 thirty seven thirty seven eight eight eight. And they will work with the local police, the local agencies. But at least when you call eight 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 thirty seven thirty seven eight eight eight, you get it on record and you get it rising to a place where people are looking at a location, looking at a borough and recognizing that there's a lot of stuff going on. Thank you.
All right, any other, you need to?
Yeah, I, I mean, I really would like Peggy to, to speak to what the definition of human trafficking is in regards to what we're considering in, in our borough, what, what we're alluding to the fact is occurring in our borough.
The federal law states sex trafficking is the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision or obtaining of a person for the purposes of a commercial sex act in which the commercial sex act is induced by force, fraud or coercion or in which the person induced to perform such an act has not attained the age of eighteen years. Labor trafficking is the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud or coercion for the purposes of subjection to involuntary servitude, peonage, debt bondage or slavery. And we know, statistics tell us that when you have a location that has a lot of people there, traffickers many times will put twenty or thirty people in a bedroom with a pot in the corner, lock the windows, lock the doors and take them out to transport them for work of either labor or sex trafficking. So yeah, anytime you have a lot of people that are living in one location, it shows a, shows up a lot of red flags.
Absolutely.
The majority doesn't, wouldn't want to live with forty people.
Correct.
We wouldn't.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, so if you're living with forty people, there's something, there's a problem.
There's a problem, there is a problem, absolutely, yeah. And I will say that ACE has been saying for over three years that we don't want to say it happens in our own community, but it does happen in our own community and we have to be vigilant. So I just, you know, I would appreciate, if we can, if the, if the police will turn in a log, I mean, not only does that allow the codes officer to see where the people are going, but it substantiates why we have all the police officers we have and, and you know, if somebody says to you, well, I never see any police officers riding around. Well, no, but you look at the log and you see they responded to forty some calls.
Exactly.
Absolutely, that's why we didn't see them riding around, because they were working.
Do we have that list of every rental property with who's living there?
Oh, well, we have the list that we've been given of who's living there, yeah.
But then again, you know, the, well, you mentioned it and.
Have you written, probably done it though?
Yes.
And the mayor mentioned it, when it comes to this, it goes beyond rental property.
Right.
You know, like.
Well, they're living anywhere.
No.
They're, they are rental properties because somebody owns them and is bringing those people in there. They're not, they, it's not the rental property like we think because we know for a fact that you may have twenty people in there paying somebody two hundred and fifty dollars a week. You know, that's part of the, the labor trafficking, yes.
But I think the point that Peggy are making is that it could be an owner.
Yes.
Occupied house that is the trafficker.
But, right, we actually have an ordinance to cover that. Eleven one oh one, all persons who own premises within the borough of Oxford which are occupied by persons not members of said owner's immediate family are required to report in writing certain information about said persons as provided as follows. Each report shall list under the column headings of name, sex and residence and whether they are adult or minor. The age of all minors shall be reported, but adult ages shall not be reported. All persons occupying said property, owners dwelling unit. Reports required under this part shall be filed with the borough secretary within one month from the effective date of this part. Reports shall be supplemented within fifteen days of the arrival of occupants not previously reported or the departure of occupants previously reported.
And how do you enforce that?
The property you're talking, the property you're talking about.
That's what I'm talking, how do you enforce it?
Well, we, we try.
Any person, any person firm or corporation who shall violate any provision of this part upon conviction thereof shall be sentenced to pay a fine of not more than one thousand dollars plus costs and in default of payment of said fine and cost to a term of imprisonment not to exceed thirty days.
The property you're talking about, if you pulled their record up with what they filled out, who lives there?
Yes.
How many people?
Pulled it up today.
How many people live there?
Six.
Okay, so there, there are.
They're wrong, yeah, they're wrong, yeah. But we, we can't do anything till we get the, till we get a log or a report or something official from the police department.
I'm not hearing that, I'm hearing that the codes officer can investigate it.
To me, the codes officer should be able to investigate it because it's absolute report.
And it's been brought to, and it's been brought to the attention, that absent of, so if, if I as a community member called the codes office and said there's forty people living in this house and I believe that they're disruptive, that code officer has, so what's, what would be the difference?
Oh, that would be one reason, you know. Because they were called out, the, the police were called in in that incident.
So why can't they do it simultaneously in this situation?
Sometimes. May I answer this, may I answer? But sometime, most of the times it happens at two or three in the morning, our, our codes officer does not work then. And they would call the police.
Right.
So what we're saying is if the police are called there, yes, sometimes he goes there all on his own.
Sure.
But if he doesn't and it happens at two or three in the morning, we have to get that information. And the, the way we want it is in a log or it has to be a report because that is required, that we have that information if we're going to take it further, we have to have it.
The ordinance requires a report, so I guess, am I right when they would be, we sit down and decide what information is needed on that report versus just a copy of the log saying, on this date, police officer Brown responded to this address. Would, would there be any issues if the officer, say, police officer Brown went out, forty people there, he determined no disruptive conduct was going on? Is there anything preventing the officer from reporting to the codes enforcement officer the following day? We believe that they're out of code because there was over forty people saying they lived there. Would that be an issue to have that? I would see why that would be a problem.
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's pretty much what I'm asking for, yeah.
Some documents that may make it more, I don't know. Some sort of request to codes enforcement officer to have him go out to investigate the amount of people living in a disruption.
Nothing, nothing.
And then the intent is, is for this to eventually go through a court proceeding and you would have to have, that's why I'm saying, you'll have to have log something there. And in the incident that the mayor and I discussed previously, we could not get a, a report or a log. We finally, I guess finally what I did get was a, maybe a report from the, the chief, I'm not sure at that time, but it was not, we did not get the report and we, and as it says there, there's a, a time element involved in it too. So what I'm saying is we need to get the full support of the police and I think part of that means that, you know, we need to, to know these properties and to come in and, and I don't see why it can't come in in the form of a log to us if they're.
What's a log look like?
It's just, it's just a log right up.
Does a log?
It'll just say the time, it'll say when, when.
Just specifically for that incident, it's not, I think of a log and it has other things attached to it.
I don't know, a log would have, it would be the entire shift log.
It would be the entire shift log, so.
Yeah, it would cut out.
It would have to be eradicated, so obviously we don't.
Well, that's what I mean, so it would, it would make more sense to not give the log.
It would make more sense to have a report that's, that's a trusty one.
Because that's going to take more work. Right, yeah, absolutely, so they, they would have.
I, I don't see what would hurt giving it to me, I mean, if, if, well, I don't know what you would need, but I think some of that is going to have to come to me and come to me in a timely manner, that's the thing.
According to the ordinance, it goes to the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, well, whatever, yeah.
That to me, we've got to stay on the, on the guidelines.
Well, you think.
But is that, can that be, are we at the point where we can do this electronically, like the police department, like to Mary?
What I am saying and the reason I said the log is because that was all I could get out of the chief the last time, that's what I'm saying.
We need a report.
And I kept getting phone calls from Mr. Quillen.
And if while they're investigating disruptive conduct that doesn't warrant a rush or anything, they notice something that the codes department needs to address and that should be in the report.
And, and if Mr. Quillen's calling, I would think that you have the absolute right to say, do you believe that there's more people living here than there should be by permit? And if he says yes, that's enough for the codes enforcement officer to go out.
But if we know in this, I'm not going to discuss that incident because the mayor and I took care of that, that's a whole other issue.
I know, I'm, I'm saying.
But what I'm saying is we've, we've got to get cooperation from everybody on this.
Agreed.
Because I'm, I'm warning you and it doesn't matter whether you believe me or not, I warned you, I've done my due diligence. And if, you know, we can't get, I'm just saying.
But I love you, Julie, I don't know why you think we don't believe you, I don't know why.
No, I'm, I'm, see, I don't care, please, this is not, we don't need to carry this on.
No, 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 but it's.
No, it doesn't matter, I'm just saying, I've, I've got this.
It does matter, it does matter, because the way that you say it, it's.
I'm not saying in any particular way, I am scared, I am scared.
Well, and we appreciate that, and we want that information.
Okay, well, good, that's what I want, that's what I wanted, yeah, that's good.
And we want to be on the same page, but I don't want to be more, like, I, I don't know, I'm not sure what that's about and I think what we have to do.
Because I've been bringing it up for the last three years, that's what it's about, I've been bringing it up, I've been saying, we, we need to force my codes office. I've been saying we, we need to force my codes office. That's why. I've been bringing it up and we haven't made any changes.
So you, the chief, um, will work with the codes department and, and what, and you as far as
Yeah.
what you, what you want in that report. And then basically the ordinance says, when they go out, whether there's anything there worth.
Yes.
We need a report that they had that call.
Right.
When can, when can we have that report done?
As far as what?
By next week. When, when can we do that report done? Is it going to be a week or two?
By the next meeting.
All right. We'll move on here. Item, um, H and I, we've already talked about J, truck parking.
Um, I thought we were going to have it for tonight, but we're not. Um, you'll have it for next week. Um, essentially, David's worked with chief to, to revise it to, eh, um, include, um, better description of what is and isn't okay. So you'll have an answer.
And the Federal Fair Housing Act?
Um, Federal Fair Housing Act. Um, we were the, they may, it's ready to go. It's for advertisement. Um, it went to the Act two forty seven review. Um, they made a, a slight recommendation, but it wasn't anything that we needed to address. So you'll have that for next week to, to advertise.
Okay, um, you had a discussion on your school bus traffic on Broad Street. Peggy, name is attached to that one?
My name is attached to that. Um, there is some concern about the number of buses that are speeding, that are going up Broad Street and making the turn and destroying the curb. And it, the recommendation is that perhaps we could look at having the bus traffic rerouted. And because Mr. Teal brought this to our attention, I'd appreciate his giving us a little bit more detail on that.
I don't really bother.
Don't do that to me.
I, I, I can, I can pass information on. The, the problem, the buses come out of, uh, the Elk School, School, Elk Ridge, and they come up Broad Street. And those buses, their, their foot is either on the pedal for gas or for fuel, or it's on the brake. And they, they have stop signs all the way down through. If you talk to the residents that live along that street, this, this is a buzzed already issue. They're housing libraries tremendously. From the, every time they hit a manhole cover or just a small ridge in the road, the road is getting torn up again. I mean, it's, it's already, we've already said it has to be repaved again. I mean, you know, damage done to it. But there's really no reason for them to come down there. They come down from Sixth Street. It's full throttle. They don't stop. They almost start slowing down until they hit Fifth Street. And they make a left-hand turn to go down to the schools. And, uh, Wilson's house that's on the corner there, Doug Wilson and, uh, Everdun. You can see where they actually go up on the sidewalk. They're going so fast they can't keep it in the road. The suggestion was, eh, and well, the reason they do that too is because our crossing guard, he stops traffic and, and keeps the buses moving. So that's the first bus stops at Sixth Street stop signs. After that, everybody just keeps moving. They don't, they don't bother slowing down. But the, the best result for this is as they come out of Elk Ridge, you make a right on Eighth Street and get on Market. Make a left and come down to Fifth Street where you have a wide turn you can make. Run the buses down Fifth Street, no stopping. So time-wise, it's going to be probably better than what they have right now. And, uh, it would eliminate that intersection from people, ha- they have to stop the cars over that time that gets backed up and you can talk to Rick, Rick Weaver to be a guard there. But they'll back up, and then it's a madhouse when they cut loose.
We just have to route.
Can, can school, before we go to the school board, really? And just because I'm saying this from experience, um, literally, can we ask the bus drivers, is Rick stopping the cars and are they too close to the intersection thereby not letting them make the wide angle turn that they need to stay off the sidewalk? When I was doing the spots.
It's because of speed is why they can't stay off the sidewalk.
I'm just saying, when I was doing, where I was at, Fifth and Garfield, I made sure to stop the cars well back to give the bus drivers the ability to come out S wing wide.
They stop them back on, uh, South Fifth, on, on the, on the south side.
I like giving the bus drivers input on it.
No, well, they do stop them back there. It, he's nowhere near it. The reason they're, the reason they're hitting the curb is they're going too fast to make the turn that roll the bus over.
And my intent about bringing this to an item of discussion was not to turn on, solve it. But to like, where should it go at this point?
I mean, I. Centrical force dictates that the shorter you cut that curve, the more force you're going to have turning the bus over. So if you're going faster, cutting the corner sharp, the bus is more inclined to go.
Well, wait, wait, the discussion here needs to be about the route. That's all we can decide.
That's right. That's what it's about.
And I don't think, we need, we'd have to talk to the bus company about that. I think if you send them out on Market, they're going to be backed up at Eighth and Market. They're going to be backed up at Fifth and Market. It's going to slow their route down significantly.
Who should have the conversation with the bus company?
Either bring them in here or maybe, uh, LTAC.
My, my experience of living on Fifth Street, which is one of the major routes going into that school, car traffic slows down about five minutes before the buses ever start rolling. Because those kids get picked up and they're gone before the buses ever start moving. So as far as coming out on Market Street, it should not be an issue.
I don't know, well.
So I guess to respond to what Sue is asking, who should have the discussion? Should, should we invite the bus company to meet with a committee? Or do we invite the bus company to meet with all of us?
Start with the LTAC committee.
The LTAC committee. Thank you. We will invite the bus company to come and talk to us.
Yeah, they have, but they actually have a bus scheduler.
Yeah.
I mean, we can even ask them to, to temporarily run one, one night, one day, because to see, to see how.
I suspect they probably heard the concerns and they already have an explanation.
Yeah, and another concern was about the safety of the people getting out of their, in and out of their vehicles on Broad Street when the buses are.
Not only that, people walking across the street, there's a lot of people walk across the street between cars and such. And it's, it's, it, it is really ahead of time.
Crossing spot.
Thank you.
All right, uh, communication of council meetings, Justin Hood.
Uh, okay, I gave you a copy of a draft, um, information that could possibly be given to the public justifying council meetings and what happens and how they can become involved. I guess my recommendation is for you to look at it and if you agree with it then perhaps if we post it in various social media outlets, so that the members of the public have some idea what to expect when they do come to a council meeting. Um, the other thing is, I didn't yell everybody a link, but I did print out a pack of, um, the use of social media. That's just more of the information for council. Suggestion is that, you know, local government, wherever possible, continue to use social media, media as a way to keep its citizens informed. So it's just more two information pieces. But the about, about council, if you could give us some feedback, just whatever you think that's appropriate. And the thing is, um, you know, make that available to the public.
The second one, fire.
We have a question. Yeah, that's just an FYI. About, about, uh, about council meetings. Yes, just a description as to what happens and, uh.
And then if we agree, then can we post this somehow on the YouTube? I mean, can we have a picture taken of it?
We already have a website.
Yeah, but it could be as much as also.
I could probably put something in the comments section of the video.
Yeah, Betsy has something pretty similar on the website, the borough website. Where it talks about borough govern, uh, local government.
I would probably say rather than put a picture of it, because YouTube you can minimize and this could show up real well on the minimize screen. It would probably be better to put a link to, when we put it on Facebook or what have you, put a link and say, "For information about borough council meetings, go to yada, yada, yada."
I think we could hand it out there too. We could hand it out, um, where people pay their water bills and get their golf licenses. I'd put them right up there and hand it out there.
Yeah, I think also by doing that, we drive traffic to the, to the borough website, to the Facebook page, and things like that as well.
Is it possible to mail this out with the water bill?
Not all that.
No.
Not all that, no. I mean, it would, they, because I think they.
Something to them so that they.
Well, you could put on the, on the water bill, you could put a reference onto that, like Garrett or Randy saying, to go to the website.
Website, yeah, that would be nice.
I'll tell you more. If you can get me about four hundred, five hundred copies of it, I'll hand them out balls in April.
Okay, great.
I'll be there.
Yeah, we can, we can bring it down.
We better, uh, we better get public, or a special project working on this one then.
Working on what?
On this room.
We are working on the room. We, we've got.
We just signed for a safe.
Yeah, that's part of it. And the, and also the, um, Public Works, the building down at Public Works is to move this stuff out down to there, yeah. But we've also called three people for, um, uh, quotes on this. Yes, we have to get three people and they may have to, they have to put it out the bin.
Oh, come on.
Can I get my recorder?
It's over, over nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. It has to go out to bin.
For this room?
You, that, well, not just this room, it's, uh, the offices out there.
This room first and the one next to you.
Okay. Don't, don't say that one wrong. No, we can't do that. We can't do that that way now.
All right.
I strike that now.
All right, public comment. Any other public comment? You already used yours up.
I did.
Randy?
I got a list now. No, I just, you know, I decided to, what money is listed on this page? And I want to remind people, we raised our, we only raised our taxes a quarter of a mil. And that's because we saved eighty thousand dollars out of the budget last year. Right now, we just, we just spent, we're, we're getting ready to spend one and a half mils of our money. Over two hundred and forty thousand dollars was listed on there, and that's not all of it. Watch what we're spending. That's all. Uh, the, uh, all the waivers we had talked about, or you had talked about, you know, what's going on there. I, I'd just like to remind people that some of our parking issue, our parking perception, was due to waivers we gave to people who turned their retail into apartments and did not require off-street parking. And Peter Hodgealis is the only one I know of that has taken care of that. He did it correctly.
Say that again, Randy?
We gave waivers that they didn't require them to have off-street parking for their tenants.
And that's going back.
And that's going back, yeah. And that's not us. That was, that was, that was, that goes back. But what I'm saying is, that's what happened, and that's what has caused a lot of our parking issues, perception issues that we see out there, is because, uh, they didn't have off-street parking. Uh, I, I did some calculating from last year, and our council was running about seventy-five percent for me. On the average, I think we had, uh, five and a quarter people in attendance, on average, for our council meetings. That's counting special meetings, so. I just think that's, that's kind of low. And I'd like to see, you know, we get in there and get, get more to it.
You talking about council members' attendees or silent attendees?
Council meetings. No, the, uh, the attendees out here were a lot less. Of course, they were at a hundred percent, but, uh, they were a lot less.
Now they're even fewer.
Yeah. Uh, this, and this issue about the tenants, that, uh, nuisance rental ordinance that we wrote a few years ago, that handles everything you just discussed. I mean, everything is in there. It just, it was never enforced. I know, I know of one house in particular, within two-month period, seventeen calls were put out on this one house by four different houses and called on this one house. I checked with the chief on that. There was not one log on that house.
Really?
Yep.
What's, like, tell me what the law.
Oh, I can tell you what it is now. Oh, it was, I think it's seventeen, no, uh, one seventy-five, I think it is. It's on the corner of Reno. It's, it's, uh, it, those aren't, those people aren't there anymore.
Can I say, I had something where you almost done.
Well, just about. Well, you can have something to that if you want to. I mean, it's on that subject.
Um, we had an issue on Fourth Street a number of years ago, and there was sort of a, this was way back.
Well, I can.
Was it when, not Pappas, um.
Stults.
Stults was chief, chief. And, uh, one of my neighbors and a few other people worked very diligently on some of the issues there. But, um, one of my neighbors mentioned there's some kind of, um, and this is where logging or keeping track of complaints comes in. If you have, if you can prove a certain amount of complaints and issues in a house, not only can you find the, the owner, you can have that place listed as unrentable for like four or five years. Where it has to sit empty. There was a garage across from Megan's house that there was, he rented it out separate from the house and there's people hanging out there. It was a mess. And anyway, they got, they used that there, and he was not allowed to rent that place out. It was several years. I can't remember the exact time. Was that, he, he revoked the rental comment. That's why those things are so important, but.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what you need, is you need them documented so that you can, you can handle them. Because the, the fines start out, I think you get two, two, the, the landlords get two notices before they start getting cited. And after that, it's, and the reason for that was, it was strictly for rental property. I mean, that's why we wrote it, because there is a problem with it. The other problem I have is, I would, I would suggest any police officer in this borough, if there's forty people that they're going to, if they don't have someone to help back them up, call the state police to back them up. Because one person with forty people, that's suicide. You know, I, I know Scott's an excellent officer, but still, well, that's who, I don't know who it was, but.
But that's the big thing. That's the thing that really upset me when I found that out. I was very afraid for, I love our police officers.
And when, when this rental inspection was, was going on, I had suggested that these absentee landlords we have, in order to get them involved in, in what they're creating down here, that every six months is what I suggested, they have to go through there and list everybody that's in that house. You know, the, uh, and I said, well, so if you don't want to do six months, let's do a year. If you have, if you have fifteen people living in a house, and it only says there's four in there, and you have a fire in that house, well, after you get four people out, you don't care about anybody else. Well, there's a lot of people in that house. And I know there was one apartment that had seventeen people in it, up here, because they cut a hole and went up and slept in the attic. So that happens. Uh, the other thing they could have done on that situation, if they had a call for backup to come in there, just take everybody's name, check their, check their identifications, see what their address lists, cite them if they don't have the correct address on there from living there. And if they do, we get earned income tax from every one of them. So.
Yep, now.
That's right, you know, give them a back taxes. I mean, there's several things you could do, but the thing is, it's got to be stopped. And, and the only way you can do it is by lollying everything that ever comes.
And we got to be creative. I mean, you got to find creative ways.
Yeah. Hey, hey, they're creative in the way they, they do it, so you got to get creative.
Then we get ahead of them.
All right, uh, any other public, more, any more public comment? I don't have any comments. We have enough comments tonight. Hi, Eric?
Uh, at the next meeting, I'll be presenting a resolution to council asking councils, point seven, panel five thirty-five, and House Bill seventy-one involving the use of radar, not gun. At radar, right?
It's a gun there already.
I was waiting for the make.
Uh, there are, there are new, there are a few areas that are working their way through the Senate in the House that would enable local police officers to begin to use radar. So I will be presenting a resolution asking you to approve that.
Then we got to buy radar now.
I was just saying.
How about your radar?
I'm sure some of it will donate some.
Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania's the only state in the nation that has established maximum speeds for road safety and then hindered all law enforcement other than the state police for enforcing those safety standards. Pennsylvania has the worst record for speeding fatalities in the United States of America. So I will have that much of this in the document.
Pennsylvania has like signs on roads for aggressive drivers.
That's all I have.
All right, Betsy, do you have any of that?
Do you want me to say anything else?
You have something to say, Sam?
I, I do have one little thing and I just would like to remind everyone, because I don't think everyone was here when we first started the rental property inspections. And the reason that came about was because one day, um, we saw a house on Old Street that fell into another house and there was a baby sleeping in that house and it hit the gas line and the whole thing could have gone up, it did not. But we all were really holding our breath. And I think that made us all take this job very responsibly, knowing that if we don't keep up the infrastructure in these houses and, and we're trying to affect everyone, that we, we would, we would start to be losing, you know, we would be losing lives. I mean, it's, it's not just as some people think for us to make money, because we really don't make anything off of it, you know.
The whole house fell over?
The whole house fell into another house on Old Street, yeah, yeah.
What, what year was that?
Uh, what, what year was that, it was probably two thousand and one.
Really?
Yeah, it was very scary, very scary, yeah. So that's why we started all of this, that, that started, obviously started the discussion of it, so, that's all.
All right, now, exact instructions?
I'll take your journal.
I might have taken my journal, I'll say yes or no?
Aye.